Stop, yep. Good evening and welcome to the Town of New Paltz Planning Board meeting of October 26, 2015. First up is a review and approval of minutes of the October 19th, 2015. The board see the amended, Georgia put in some tweaks into the minutes and I just want to make sure the board had seen them.
Was it emailed or is this it?
It came in to the, on our desk, okay.
Oh, I assumed that they all was emailed.
I've read them on the line, so I didn't know.
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you. I would just like to remind the Town Planning Board of Mohawk's response to helping the taxpayers. This goes back about three years or something like that. Kevin Barry was looking to find a way to get the so-called tax exempt to pay taxes. Looked into various tax exempt organizations and found that they were kind of skimming and doing things they shouldn't. When Kevin asked the people in Mohawk if they would consider raising their entrance fee or whatever it is by maybe 50 cents or a dollar to help lower the cost that the already overburdened town taxpayers have, because remember they have to subsidize the village. The response, which I will not forget, from Mohawk was simply, "We don't have to." Never forgot that. They're right. But you're considering giving them more subsidies and raising the taxes to the taxpayers basically in the town. Nobody can make them, you know, I would just look into that, number one. And somebody made a suggestion to me, and I'm sorry I don't remember who, you know, maybe you should look into asking them to give a reduced rate to the people who live in the town and village. I mean, not that, you know, it's just something that gives these people some money back for what's being taken away from them. And, you know, that was basically, oh, one other comment, listening to the other gentleman. "I find it amazing that the people who so objected to CVS because of the traffic on 299 have no problem with any traffic that may be created by this project because this one they like." Thank you.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Mr. Calamano and members of the Planning Board, I am commenting on and underscoring the importance of the Planning Board to declare a positive declaration of this Type One application submitted by the Mohawk Preserve and to urge you to consider the various projects and constructions in that proposal as a comprehensive project requiring a full environmental impact statement with regard to impact on traffic and parking in the town of New Paltz. The Mohawk Preserve Foothills Project application for site plan approval includes the development of 113 new parking spaces with estimates of 25,000-plus new visitors a year to this site. We do not believe that an adequate assessment of the traffic impacts on the immediate community and spillover into the main street area of the village and town has been conducted as it did not include the traffic impacts of the Samuel Prior Campgrounds nor the proposed redesign of the bus station or the proposed OSI River to Ridge Trail Project. All of these impact the level of traffic in the town and the village. From May through October, the area is a prime visitor destination currently and traffic on 299 on the weekends is typically backed up from Route 7 going east to the thruway. This traffic discourages town residents, particularly those west of the Wallkill, from venturing into the town altogether on the weekends. Most of the traffic is through traffic, which does not even stop in the town of New Paltz to buy a cup of coffee. Local businesses reap little or no benefit from all this traffic and will reap still less with the proposed Mohawk Preserve and related projects, including the Campgrounds Project. However, town resident and business taxpayers will underwrite the cost of this increased traffic, wear and tear on our already, on our already fragile infrastructure, as with the need to replace the Libertad Bridge, negative impact on Main Street businesses, interruption of residents' access to their own downtown unless they plan to spend 30 to 45 minutes getting into town and another 30 to 45 minutes returning to their homes. And finally, there is no offset revenue from property taxes to cover the cost the town will incur for essential services provided to the Mohawk Preserve arising from the Foothills Project were it to go forward in its present form, which we view as a massive development. There has been discussion of reducing the speed limit on State Route 299 around Gatehouse Road, given that this is already the site of a high rate of accidents. However, such a reduction in speed limit cannot be done without a State Department of Transportation traffic study, and we do not believe this has been done. As a Type One action, conditional negative declarations are not permitted, and therefore issuing a negative declaration with the condition of a DOT study is not an option available to the Planning Board. We call it the Planning Board's attention again to the extremely thoughtful report of the Town of New Paltz Environmental Conservation Board's report to the Planning Board, which carefully laid out the impacts of stop-and-go traffic as would be generated by the Mohawk Preserve's Foothills Project in terms of, first of all, air pollution, second, community character, third, Town of New Paltz tax base, and fourth, the wetlands.
Irwin, wrap up.
Okay, I'm working on it. This report raises additional questions regarding the likely, the likely use of pesticides, the impact of the farm operation and timber processing, noting that these are likely to be for-profit enterprises which would add additional traffic, as we have witnessed with trucks loaded with hay for the livestock feed at the Glenwood Farm Center, which Mohawk Preserve manages and is landlord to, that's unable to pass beneath the Lenape Lane Stone Bridge. Is the Preserve's plan to replace this historic stone structure with a new and thinner steel plank bridge deck in order to accommodate large trucks and buses within their authority? A full EIS would help the Planning Board to answer these questions.
Thank you, Irwin. If you give a written comment, you can submit it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Larry.
Here's a copy for each of you. I'm Larry Bedenike. I live at 7 Calvin Boulevard, which is just off Mountain Rest Road, and I'm speaking, reading this as Board Chair of Citizens of the Shuanguk to underscore the need for a full environmental impact statement for the project proposed by the Mohawk Preserve and related projects. Reasons for a full EIS include the following. The Mohawk Preserve Foothills Project, 857 acres, is a large and complex development involving the construction of some 13 new buildings and two parking lots for 113 cars and buses. If the project as proposed moves forward, it will impact this National Register of Historic Places property through increased traffic in the area, impacts on wildlife, flora and fauna, impacts on the nearby neighborhood, impacts on the large wetland area involved, and the property soils and geology. The Open Space Institute's recently proposed River to Ridge Trail Project involves similar impacts on land adjacent to the foothills. In addition, Mohawk Preserve has presented to the Planning Board a subdivision application to subdivide the foothills parcel into two parcels, 836 acres and 19.1 acres that would be transferred to OSI. The full development plans for the 19.1 acre parcel have not been disclosed. Given the interrelationships of the Preserve plans and the Open Space Institute plans, considering these two plans separately creates a segmentation problem. The Planning Board has previously recognized a segmented consideration of plans that are linked has been deemed illegal by well-established case law. In addition, the already approved and operating Samuel Prior Campground in Gardner, about two miles west of the proposed entrance to the foothill project, adds another 50-plus parking spaces and traffic to the already overburdened Route 299 that must be taken into consideration when considering the impact this project will have on traffic. This is a complex plan, so complex that it's often difficult to understand what is and is not being proposed. For example, there are inconsistencies between the Mohawk Preserve site plans and the narrative as to the construction of an open-air educational terrace at the historic Gatehouse. This open-air educational terrace is mentioned in the narrative on Page 6, but is not shown on the site plan submitted to the Planning Board. How large is this terrace intended to be? What is its proposed use? Inconsistencies such as this underscore the need for a careful review to put all the pieces together. Ordinary citizens do not have the resources to conduct such a review absent technical expertise that we would be provided in a full EIS process. As you know, a full EIS provides the opportunity for the public and the Planning Board to have a comprehensive third-party review of the overall impacts of these projects on the community, the fiscal health of New Paltz, given that these two large developments enjoy property and school tax abatements, and the combined impacts on our natural resources recognized to be one of the most important natural areas in the country. Without an EIS, there is danger that the Preserve Foothills Project and the OSI River to Ridge Trail Project will go forward without the requisite hard look established by the courts in supporting the town in the Wilmerite case. In our opinion, Mohawk Preserve does not make a case that the town and residents of New Paltz's benefits derived from the foothills project will outweigh the cost the town will incur. The essential services the town provides the Mohawk Preserve, police, fire, and emergency services, will continue without any compensation due to the exemption from property tax and also school tax that Mohawk Preserve enjoys. Tax-paying residents of New Paltz get no special consideration for providing public support to the Reserve and are expected to pay for parking at the foothills project site as well as fees to walk and enjoy the preserve grounds, except once or twice a year. For these and other reasons, we urge the Planning Board to issue a positive declaration of this Type One action and require a comprehensive environmental impact statement to the Mohawk Preserve Foothills Project and related projects. Respectfully submitted, Lawrence Bedenike, Chair, Citizens of Shuanguk Incorporated.
Thank you, Larry. Rich.
Thank you, members of the Planning Board. I'm reading a letter from an organization that's had slide shows at Rockin' Snow, a store in downtown New Paltz that does very well because of the traffic. But the slide shows involve an organization called Paradox Sports, and I hope this letter explains who they are. This was written to you as well. "On behalf of Paradox Sports and our participants, I would like to express support for the Mohawk Preserve Foothills Project. The Mohawk Preserve has long proven its excellence as stewards of the environment. This project provides the perfect balance of protection for wildlife, wetland, and historic landmarks while allowing for recreation and enjoyment of the foothills. Paradox Sports provides opportunities for adults living with physical disabilities to enjoy outdoor adventure and recreation. The Mohawk Preserve is a great partner in that effort and has taken extraordinary measures to ensure responsible access for the elderly and disabled in our community. The Preserve has created wheelchair-accessible parking with access to the same recreation and vistas enjoyed by able-bodied visitors. They have made available, at their expense, an off-road wheelchair to aid visitors with reduced mobility. The partnership between Paradox and Mohawk Preserve has allowed us to share access to the Shuanguk Mountain region with hundreds of physically disabled adults. The Foothills Project is a unique opportunity to increase access to nature and recreation for the disabled. The terrain and proposed footpath are conducive to recreation for people with mobility challenges as they tend to be of a more moderate, moderate difficulty with fewer hills. The plan also includes much-needed but modest improvements in accessibility infrastructure. I hope you'll join us in supporting this project of conservation, stewardship, and one that will improve the quality of life for locals and visitors living with physical disabilities. Thank you for your consideration. Nate McKenzie, Regional Director of Paradox Sports, Northeast Chapter."
Thank you, Rich. Lou.
My name's Lou Carriola, and I'm Jacobs Lane, New Paltz. Being on Jacobs Lane in New Paltz, I have a close proximity to Gatehouse Road and the Gatehouse entrance. And as I submitted at the last meeting, a request for the Board to review Mohawk's Plan B, which was referenced in the Mohawk Preserve Land Asset Management Plan of 2012. Again, being in that proximity, my family and I and our neighbors cross 299 and go through that dangerous Y intersection. If the Board has not, the members have not, gone to that site and could afford to spend an hour there and watch the cars come off 299 and swing onto that Y, as cars are coming down 299, it's an education. By going to Plan B, you eliminate two access. You have, oh, you have the curb cut you would need for the proposed Plan A, and you have the dangerous Y. By going to Plan B, you eliminate that curb cut and you make a safer intersection where cars coming out, coming off Gatehouse, having to look up 299 and shoot out versus a 90-degree Gatehouse Road where egress and ingress to that road is visible. Plus, by eliminating that, there is, I believe, one driver by doing Plan B that comes out into that Y, and I think that's a dangerous situation. So again, I ask the Board to please consider Plan B and maybe spend a little time over there and see what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Tom, Corona?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm not a citizen of the Town of New Paltz, but I've been up here, I, I'm a life member of the Mohawk Preserve, and I took a special interest because of my involvement with environmental organizations and environmental battles, probably from one end of this country to the other. So I was very excited when I saw the, the plan and the original application, and to date my experience with OSI and everything OSI has accomplished is, is nothing short of extraordinary. I mean, they are the reason probably why your view shed is what it is, and everybody you put in the valley should be, I mean, put them, uh, put the valleys where I live. In the Town of New Paltz should be very, very pleased. I really commend anybody who gets up and speaks to the public. In April, I think when the submission was made, it was the same time that a famous dissident German, German writer, poet, Gunther Rost, died in April, and one of the things he said was, "It's the job of a citizen to keep his mouth open." So I certainly respect anybody who has anything to say in a public forum like this. But the one thing I want to mention is, I spent 40 years of my career in engineering, 15-year Planning Board member in my own town, and I have a great deal of background in reading technical specifications and writing them, and I certainly have to commend the Board to take and digest the massive amount of information that was in this application. I was excited about it, and it took me three days to read through it all. The part that I find disparaging is, and really difficult to digest, is when I hear Professor Spurber come up and rehash the same thing over and over again since April, spout out misinformation, ambiguities relating to this project that really, really don't exist. The extent they describe this project as being this massive, massive development, this is 800-plus acres, 860 acres, 1% area disturbance. Now, if you're in a planning field, you understand that that's, that's absolutely minuscule. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, as a Planning Board member, you all know that every application that comes before your Board has to be stamped by either civil engineer, any kind of engineer. New York State Boards or regions requires engineer, architect, I don't think surveyors are acceptable. But what I want, the point I want to make is that all these diagrams that come in here aren't stamped by a professional. Those renderings right there, those, I call them distortions, I don't know, the renderings have not stamped by a certified architect, registered architect, civil engineer, mechanical engineer, any kind of engineer, or surveyor. And I, I think it's good for the public to know in a public forum that the Mohawk Preserve has spent over a quarter million dollars on consultants for every possible study that you could imagine, and you are all in possession of those studies. I don't envy the task you have ahead of you to digest it all, and I know it's not fair as people who aren't engineers to have to do that. It's difficult to read, but the facts contradict the distortions that the concern, is it the concerned citizens or the confused citizens?
All right, Tom, you want to wrap up?
I'm starting to lose perspective. Okay. Anyway, I, I appreciate your time, but what I ask of your Board before you make any determination is read the facts, and I'm sure the Mohawk Preserve will offer any of their consultants, put any of their consultants at your disposal if you have any questions whatsoever, because I've done that. I did that back in April, and I wrote a letter to the New Paltz Times, and the concerned citizens rebutted my, my letter when I had taken three full days of my own time to read it, and they come up with some, okay, narrative.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Ron.
But again, ask the, ask the, here.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Hi, my name is Ron Maff. I live on Van Cleek Avenue, and I'm also a member of the Preserve Board. In my three minutes, I, I just want to make two points. One point, there's a lot of concern concerning traffic, yes. I've lived in New Paltz almost 50 years, I know how traffic has increased here, but there is a cumulative impact that nobody has touched on here who somehow believe that the Mohawk Preserve's traffic and the Mohawk Preserve's parking area is going to induce everyone from downstate New York to arrive here. Let me tell you, if you look at the, the data, you'll see that the Minnewaska State Park claims that they have 300,000 visitors per year. The Mohawk Preserve claims about 170,000 a year. This means that something like two out of three cars that pass through New Paltz go across the flats, actually go through the Mohawk Preserve out to Minnewaska State Park. And if you haven't been reading the papers this past week, the Governor of New York, Mary O'Cuomo, came, no, sorry about that.
No.
We'll just call him Governor Cuomo.
[laughing]
Came through on a motorcycle, talking about the development of the Catskills this next year initiative, and the local papers, neither of the local papers give you very And the local papers, neither of the local papers give you very much information about this, but go to the Albany paper, and you'll see the details concerning Minnewaska, which is actually now, according to the governor, in the Catskills. The second point I want to make, something concerns the boards here that were presented at the meeting in September. These boards were basically flashed before us, and when I got up to speak about something else, I stated that they were bogus. Two days later, I wrote a letter, personal letter, put a stamp on it, mailed it to the person who spoke here, and said, "I'd be very happy to meet out with you on the site, with your boards, our boards, the documents, and walk the site and see where things are different." There was no response. Then, two days ago, on Saturday, Citizens sent out an email blast that many of you have received, which shows these there. I'm going to, I, I still call them bogus, even though someone who knows the plans very, very well called them cartoons, frankly. The structures are depicted at exaggerated dimensions, and in a couple cases, they're even there where there's nothing in the plans for a building. Trees are shown as clear-cut when the Preserve's intent is to preserve as many trees as possible. Roots are shortened from the highway to the parking areas to exaggerate the relationships when our intent is to buffer as much as possible the visible impact of these changes. On those plans they presented back there, plant elements are clearly distorted by clustering them together, when in fact, they're not together. You can go to the plans and see this. Please take a moment to go to the Preserve's website or look at the boards that are up here, where you'll get a better picture of this. Even better yet, visit the parking area at the visitor's center at Trap's West Entry, where you will see parking areas and structures that have been fitted sensitively into the surroundings so that all the legacy trees are protected, and where the landscape has been designed so that water drains effectively. Enough said, but as I stated before, why is this group using misinformation and misrepresentation? Again, as I've also stated before, I and others at the Preserve are willing to walk the land with the leadership of the citizens, as we have done with scores, many, many scores of others, to see what is planned. I welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Carolyn, are you going to talk about Mohawk?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay.
I'm going to talk about the floodplain.
Right, we'll wait, we'll get that in public comments, okay? Lee Bell?
Hi, I'm Lee Bell, I live on 3 Julia Avenue off of Mountain Rest Road in New Paltz. I've been a member of the Preserve for over 30 years and, and love, and love these lands. I, the, the main point I want to make is my concern about the traffic, and I don't really understand why we can't have an environmental impact done by a third party so that we can really understand what the impacts are going to be of this traffic. And I realize that all the traffic is not due to Mohawk's plans, but there is a cumulative impact, and we as a community and you as a board have to deal with that. And I, I remember when I first moved to New Paltz, my friend Jane Bolowa was on a traffic committee, and they were trying to deal with the impact of traffic going through New Paltz. And it was bad then, but it was nothing compared to now. And over the years, I've had friends on the traffic committee every two or three years, and we don't have a result. Now, I know this is not, this is not the responsibility of Mohawk, but it is the responsibility of the planning board to be thinking about that and, and thinking about what's going to happen if we just keep adding and adding and adding. And I would love to see a plan that disperses, that has many ways of getting to the mountain and using the land. I think that's a way of, of making it work, but I'm very concerned about everything being funneled to this one spot that is already so crowded. And I walk there every day, so I see what the traffic is like, especially on weekends. So I just urge you to really take seriously that and, and, and to do an environmental impact that will help us understand all of the mitigating factors. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a little difficulty reading. Who signed up after Lee? I got, Ron?
You can cancel it.
Cancel it? Okay. Andy?
Thank you. I think we already have this. Listen, if it's worth saying, it's worth saying twice.
I found that a lot of people seem to misunderstand what a development is. They know the CVS and Five Guys and the mysterious third business, that's a development, but they don't think that the Mohawk Preserve's foothills, so-called project, is a development. So what you need to do is take all of those 13 buildings and bring them all together, and then you'll see this is a development, so it needs an environmental impact statement as any other development needs, so we can look at the, what it's going to do to the area, both to the ecosystem there, to the neighborhood around it, and to the rest of us. Oh, sorry. My name is Andy Weiss Bartzak, and I live on, Libertyville turns into Brunswick, so I come into town by going up Libertyville and trying to make a right turn onto 299. And so I can tell how bad the traffic has gotten over the 12 years that we have been here. And even during the week, I guess it's the leaf peepers, this last couple of weeks, I've turned around, or I've gone around another way, because I'm not going to wait for half an hour to get into the village. So traffic is, is already a, 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 an issue. What I want to bring up is the fact that this is the only trailhead that has a neighborhood around, or somewhat around it. And so, we need an EIS so that we can really seriously think about, what is this going to do to the neighborhood? People are already complaining they can't make a left turn onto Butterville to get wherever they're going. And what is this going to do to that neighborhood, as well as the ecosystem? If you've walked there, you know how peaceful it is, and the trees, and the birds, and I guess there are ducks in the ponds. So obviously, a couple hundred people each day are going to change that. And I, and I have one other thing here. And I, I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to, to bring up what they're worried about. Traffic is obvious, but I bet there are issues we didn't even think about, and somebody will come along and they'll say, "Well, what about this?" And we'll say, "Oh, yeah." So that's what an environmental impact statement, I think, is about, is we go over everything and we are, we get to think about everything. This is a very big area, and maybe it's four acres that they're going to develop, but there's a very big area there that's controlled by Mohawk Preserve, and I think we really need to think about that. Now, I want to mention with this before and after pictures here, that they were drawn by an architectural firm to the best of their ability, based on what Mohawk Preserve had brought to the board. So, which they keep changing, but I guess with the development that happens. So it gives you an idea of what it's like now and what it's going to be like, the big parking lot, the buildings, both at the testimonial gateway and at the Hasbrook House. So when I took a tour with the Mohawk Preserve people, they gave us a segmented tour. Well, this is here, and then you walk, and that is there. And sure, it doesn't seem like much, but if you put it all together, it is a lot, not just the traffic, but what's going to happen. This is a neighborhood that's going to see a couple hundred people a day. Are they going to party? Are they going to have loud music? Is the litter going to blow around? Are they going to want to eat there? Are they going to go off the trail? There's always people that go off the trail. Are they going to trespass on the neighbors that are close? Are you telling me I'm just, okay. So I think we need an environmental impact statement, so we can think about all these things, that you can encourage the neighbors to come forward and say, "Well, do you have problems with this? Do you like that?" As well as those of us who have to drive into, on Main Street or try to get on Main Street. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
Ray? Good evening. Ray Lanotti. This project becomes successful, traffic will no doubt increase substantially. I usually detoured a river road right now to get to the village. When I came before the planning board for a lot line revision, I had to grant the town sidewalk easements. This project leaves residents, including children, who would like to walk to a neighbor's house at risk. For the safety of the community, I believe sidewalk easements should be requested. This land that these gentlemen are developing is for paying customers, so people in the neighborhoods will not be able just to walk the property. Additionally, this project will remove many trees and create increased runoff into the Humboldt Creek. Stormwater reservoirs should be required, as in any large development. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wish to speak at the public hearing tonight? Come in and sign, please, and ditch your side. Come on up then.
Okay, hi. My name is Susan DiMark, and I live on DaVinci Way, and I would just like to add my voice to the people who are asking for an environmental impact statement. I understand that that's an added expense and time. This is a sizable project. This really deserves careful consideration. We can't just be a knee-jerk community and say, "No, no, no," but we can have careful deliberation before the kinds of projects that we're looking at here. We do have to care about the neighborhood that's still, that is there right now, environmental considerations, traffic. I, I mean, it's incredible to me that mo, that many people are now avoiding New Paltz proper and avoiding the, the flatlands area and so on because of how terrible the, the traffic is. I'm a Mohawk Preserve member, I support Mohawk Preserve very strongly, and I believe they've been a wonderful member of the community, but you can't just say this is going to be on 1% of the land. This has more than a 1% impact that's worth looking at. It's a change of character, it's a change of use, and if, if the groups believe they need this to promote and expand participation, it's really worth looking at in a very careful way, even if that's added expense. I pay my membership to Mohawk Preserve, and I would fully, in fact, it's up for Reno, I would fully hope that it goes toward this kind of thing, a careful environmental impact statement of a nature. I could just, I'll just say one more thing. The Peekamoose area in the Catskills, I had a friend who went there in the 90s when it was very quiet, and over the years now, it's gotten very, very popular, and they just did a piece in the Watershed Post about the trash, people coming in by groups. I think when you have something of the nature of 90 parking spaces and you have buses and so on, you really are changing a character of something, and you're, you know, you are, you know, we're not, let's not say, let's not do that, but you have to really, I think, this process has been so contentious that an environmental impact statement is the kind of thing that can then satisfy people like, "Yes, we as a community really looked at this in an objective way, and that's all I would ask." Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make? Yes, sir.
Can I say something? In two minutes, I already spoke.
No, you already spoke.
Hello, my name is Bill Brobel. I would like to say I used to live in the Hasbrook House. I worked for Mohawk, I was given an option to pay a higher rent than I could afford to live there, and then evicted before the lease was even due to be signed, so I, I moved out of there. But a couple things I would like to mention, and one is, that road is incredibly dangerous. My son, when he was a teenager, pulled out and was hit. I pulled a few cars out of the ditch along 299 there that had gone off the road, and I, a friend of mine, who I worked with at Mohawk, was hit on the corner of Libertyville and 299, and I swerved out and waved a few cars. So that road is very dangerous, and if you're going to be handling not just the number of cars, but cars pulling off a road, pulling over, it's, you're going to really increase the danger. I don't know what is being made, you know, what steps are being taken to handle that. So the Gatehouse Road where it pulls off 299 is an accident waiting to happen, it's a terrible accident waiting to happen. So if you increase anything there, it's going to get, you know, worse, it's going to be more traffic stopping there. Another thing is, I don't know if anyone has ever looked at the Preserve or OSI, but along the, it was a wide-open field outside of the Hasbrook House, just across, and along that edge are, was a dump in there at some point with cans. I reported it to my bosses at Mohawk, I don't know if they ever, even anyone, there were car parts, metal parts, bed frames, barrels, cans of things, canisters, and I don't know what was in them, and that's all marshland there, it's pretty soggy, I used to walk around and hike in there. So there's, there's a few things to be considered, and I don't know how much more of the land throughout the years that it was owned, it was used as a dumping ground, but that might be a serious thing to consider before getting involved with it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Take your time.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Don't worry, I haven't got you. Yeah, motion to close the public hearing for Mohawk Preserve, Mohawk two lots subdivision and site plan for tonight? Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you all. Okay, we're moving on to the next item on our agenda, the public comment session. And with this opportunity to bring up anything you want to bring up for the board. Carolyn, you're first up.
Yes, my name is Caroline Paulson. I am a self-appointed Springtown Road and Floodplain Advocate, living here in New Paltz for 37 years. I understand that you've also already discussed the floodplain amendments to the laws, which I and my fellow residents have been strongly advocating for. We had a very spirited debate on Thursday for about an hour's time, when my neighbor spoke up very well, and I spoke up too. And I would advise anybody really interested in the subject to look at that tape, which is available on YouTube. The first 20 minutes is a budget debate, and then after that, an hour of us talking. So I, I read somewhere that people here had been talking that maybe 15 new houses could be built if this floodplain law was amended. And I have here some data. Okay? These maps were prepared by the assessor's office, they have the acreage and the frontage of each lot on Springtown Road. And then this is the wetlands, and this is the floodway. Me and my neighbors have really been staring at this information, which takes a lot of staring to decipher, I admit. But we don't get 12 houses out of this, okay? And maybe, maybe people weren't looking at the wetlands when they said 12 houses. I don't know, maybe that's where the problem is. Because wherever there's wetlands and wherever there's a floodway, you cannot build a new house. Wherever you have less than three acres, you cannot build a new house. Wherever you have less than 200 feet of frontage, you cannot build a new house. Okay, so, and moreover, even if all those conditions are fulfilled, there are still an awful lot of difficult and restrictive demands made by our New Paltz Code, even if the changes that we recommend have been made. Frankly, I have my worries that some of my neighbors will be somewhat depressed and upset when they realize that even if, when we change this law to be appropriate and to give us back our rights... give us back our rights, that we still have an awful lot of somewhat arbitrary seeming engineering demands, which may or may not be truly fair or relevant. Anyway, if you think that maybe we could build more houses on Springtown because somebody's going to build a road, please, get real. Nobody is going to go to the expense of building a new road into wetlands, floodways, all of these problems. It's not going to happen. The second thing is, the whole idea of danger on Springtown Road has been grossly exaggerated and distorted. The real facts are, according to FEMA, there are four conditions which may bring a local town to restrict rights or development. And by that restriction, they mean maybe raising your demand for your living space from one foot up to two feet, or something of that nature. Anyway, these four things do not occur on Springtown Road at all. They are coastal surge. We don't have any Tussamis on Springtown Road. I think we can all agree to that. Okay? Water flowing at a rapid velocity through a narrow space or flash flooding doesn't happen on Springtown Road. The water always comes up like this. And every inch it rises, it's spreading out more and more over this vast plain we have. There's no velocity. Nobody has ever been harmed. Okay? The other thing is prolonged flooding. This does not happen on Springtown Road. I have been there 34 years. The longest I have ever been sort of blocked into my home is about 35 hours. I recently visited Mississippi Coastal towns. Guess what their prolonged flooding was? Four months of high water. Okay? I told them about our law and they laughed their asses off. Okay, the next thing. Jams or levees that may break, causing a sudden surge of water like Katrina had. Doesn't exist on Springtown Road. Doesn't exist. Okay, now I have, I have been working on something. There is a problem on Springtown Road, and I think I have found a way to work towards a really good solution. The DEC has recently put a lot of analytical and funds actually to the issue of barriers to waters that should be flowing freely. They're trying to get rid of culverts and dams that are obsolete, inadequate, no good. They have a program where they'll match your funds. So I have just started investigating this. I contacted David Closer over there today and Daniel Doyle. And I think there is every possibility of getting the humpo changed, upgraded, so that water flows through and under the road. The road is somewhat higher. This is a real public safety issue, and it has nothing to do with the residents whatsoever. If you had a tornado go through, take out the whole neighborhood, you would still have. In fact, you would have more problems with people driving into that road and being fooled by it, and floating off and being really endangered. This never happens to us residents. We know to just drive up Kline Hill and go around Doug. We know that. Okay? But the general public does not know this. And there's a dangerous thing going on there, particularly because you can look and you can see what looks like a few inches of water, and you say, "Oh, that's not a problem." And the county doesn't always put up the barriers like they should. And you can drive into that, but the road dips, and you can't see it if you don't know the road, if you're not a resident. So, okay, this is a real safety issue, but it's nothing, the floodplain law has nothing to do with it, does not add any safety whatsoever. The way to improve the safety on Springtown Road is for us to get that DEC grant money and go in for this capital project and improve that road and that culvert so that things are better. Okay? So I have a few, I've just been researching this very recently, so I don't have, you know, but it's very exciting to me, and I pledge myself to work through this.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Anybody? All right, Butch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Butch Denner. I chaired this planning board for about eight years. I sat on it for 10 years. I commend you all for the work you do. It's not easy. I'm glad there was no TV or social media when I was a chairman. But, but under our leadership, public comment did take its first step. Grudgingly, but it did take its first step. When this building was dedicated, we came in here for the dedication, there was no flag in here. I paid for the first flag for this building because I believe that the rights that we are enjoying tonight and every night that this board meets and any board meets, those rights are guaranteed us by people who shed the blood to, oh, sorry. It's my ringtone. But people fought, sacrificed for the right to gather and speak our mind in a democracy. This town was founded by people who came for religious freedom. I'm a man of faith. Other people of faith and of patriotism have called me. They wanted to come here tonight in larger numbers than are here. But I commend you for wanting to say the pledge. We used to say it at some distant past. I don't know what happened to it. I couldn't care less. If you succeed in this, I commend you, and I would love to say the pledge. However, I'm not here about the pledge. I'm here about the comments that were made that were insulting, condescending, irritating, and personally offensive about people of faith and of people of patriotism. This flag is not third grade. This flag, this pledge, is not silly. People take it to heart. It means something. And the words of public officials cut hard and deep. And I'd like you all to remember, when you have your meeting to find Mr. Chairman's consensus, that a lot of the consensus in this community comes from people of faith, people of sacrifice, and people of patriotism. And I thank you for your sacrifice for our community and your service. Thank you all.
Thank you, Butch.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Yes, Ira.
I just wanted to come here tonight to make a comment regarding this situation regarding the pledge of allegiance. Seen a lot of nonsense, that it's mandatory, that it's required, has to be done. That's not true. In the United States of America, freedom was fought for, and people have the right to denigrate the flag, denigrate the military, have, say whatever they feel because that's their right. There is no mandatory obligation to say the pledge. There isn't one in schools. There isn't one here. There isn't any, there isn't anyone, anywhere in the United States. People have the right to opt out. And unfortunately, like I said, not being a, I believe in free speech, which most of the progressives in the village attack me for. And free speech is just that. It's speech you don't like. It's speech that, if, if the definition of free speech was speech that you like, you wouldn't need free speech. I agree with it. Now, I have no problem if people don't, you know, feel, as I've seen, that the flag is sexist, racist, whatever terms they're using, that the United States is a terrible, terrible country, and it shouldn't be. Matter of fact, I saw on that social media that it was compared to the Nazi flag and the rebel flag, which I thought was kind of interesting because I would think that the progressives in New Paltz would have liked the rebel flag because they didn't like the government and they broke away. My point is, this is something that the requirement to say the pledge is actually, in my opinion, to help those who want to say the pledge, because the pledge is banned in a lot of places. And anybody who tries to say the pledge, I mean, you had a bunch of people do it now, technically you could have had them arrested for interrupting your meeting. I don't say you wouldn't do it, but that's the law. So in order to protect people who believe in this country, who don't think it's a terrible, represents terrible items as going on, there are requirements to say the pledge. Obviously, without that, it would never get said anywhere, particularly in New Paltz. I just wanted to mention that. And again, I don't care what people do, but I don't like the misrepresentation that it's forced upon people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ira. All right.
My name is Stana Weisberg. I live on Cooper Street. While I do respect the things that the flag stands for absolutely, and I consider myself very much patriotic, what I think some people are not understanding is that when the pledge happens, there are people, for instance, who are Quaker, who aren't allowed to make pledges. There are other reasons why people don't want to make the pledge, and their reasons are irrelevant. The bottom line is that when it is done, it puts people who don't want to make the pledge in the position of having to publicly refuse to take it. And that that puts some people who have a problem with the fact that it refers to God now, which it has always, and other things and whatever, it can make, put an undue burden on those people. So yes, we are free to say it, and, you know, I, I'm sorry to take up your time with this, but I just, I do not want the only side heard, the side that thinks the pledge is so important. It is not required by law that you do it at this meeting, and if you choose not to do it, I support that. And if you choose to do it, I support that too. It's up to you.
Does anybody have any public comments about some planning board issues that we actually deal with? I don't want to get into a public forum on the best and worst of it. Two minutes, Ray, and that's it.
All right. My comment is on the flood law revisions review. Stacy Delerade is our professional on building codes, FEMA standards, and zoning laws. She's the town code enforcement officer. She went through Chapter 82, Town Code 140-19, and Town Code 121. And she drew up these amendments. So I'd like for you to support her decisions and agree to all the amendments that she presented to you. Thank you.
Kitty?
Thank you all for honoring the spirit of democracy in our country by serving as volunteers on our planning board. As one of the council members who voted to pass the floodplain law, which was subsequently challenged in court and upheld in its entirety, I am trying to understand the consequences of the revisions you are being asked to review. I'm not sure if you received the red line version of the law when you were asked to review it, and therefore are aware of the many deletions to the original law. As you know, the purpose of a local floodplain law is to make federally subsidized flood insurance available to floodplain residents. This means that all taxpayers, including those of us who don't live in floodplains, contribute to this fund. A primary goal of the NFIP program is to reduce the cost of this program by breaking the damage/rebuild/damage cycle, by requiring all new, substantially improved, and substantially damaged structures to be constructed in a manner that is reasonably safe from flooding through protection techniques. The NFIP offers flood insurance to homeowners, renters, and business owners provided their communities adopt and enforce floodplain management ordinances. Flood insurance and many kinds of federal disaster assistance are not available in communities that do not participate in this program. Because we are a participating community, all residents of New Paltz damaged by Hurricane Irene were allowed to bring our flooded debris to the town landfill free of charge, and the town was reimbursed by FEMA. So there certainly has been a benefit to having this law. The NFIP has four basic components. One, transfer the costs of private property flood losses from taxpayers to floodplain property owners through flood insurance premiums. Provide floodplain residents and property owners with financial aid after floods. Guide development away from flood hazard areas. Require that new and substantially improved buildings be constructed in ways that would minimize or prevent damage during a flood. You have heard that the definition to cumulative substantial damage has been revised. This is the FEMA definition. Damage of any origin sustained by a structure whereby the cost of restoring a structure to its before-damaged condition would equal or exceed 50% of the market value. This refers to the oft-existed example of a tree falling on a house, even when it is not the result of a flood. That's what FEMA, not the town of New Paltz, states. So the people of New Paltz need to know that our planning board is satisfied that the new definition of cumulative substantial damage is consistent with the FEMA definition. Failure to comply could mean the loss of flood insurance. Let's make sure we are not creating unintended consequences. You have also heard that estimating damage is a complex process. However, the process is standardized so that communities don't arbitrarily create their own standards, and FEMA has an electronic substantial damage estimator that can be downloaded. I do understand that calculating the limitations on enlarging buildings by more than 20% added an owner's burden of research onto our building inspector and the homeowner, and I don't object to deleting that language, but I don't think it's accurate to view that section as prohibiting rebuilding, as I think I heard at your last meeting. May a local community pass more restrictive standards? Is a question from the FEMA handbook. The answer is yes. In fact, local communities are encouraged to provide an extra margin of safety by requiring structures to be elevated above the base flood elevation, BFE. That is why we added the language, requiring that new roads and driveways not be 1.5 feet or more below the BFE. FEMA permits driveways at BFE as long as they don't require fill, and that's something that was confirmed by our building inspector at your last meeting. However, I haven't found any rationale that says it's okay to build a new road or driveway below BFE. I would be very careful about adopting language that allows new roads below BFE. Please base your decision on feedback from our police, fire, and ambulance responders, which was requested by the town board and directed by their attorney at their October 5th meeting. Do our first responders feel it is safe to send their personnel into a situation where, say, Springtown Road is already flooded to one or two feet, and the new driveway they need access to is an additional 1.5 feet below that? I think your job would be a lot easier if you leave the road access language in. If a developer comes to you with a secondary access, you can be confident you will have protected the lives of our emergency responders, as well as the people who are new to our community and won't understand why no one can rescue them the next time. community and won't understand why no one can rescue them the next time a storm like Hurricane Irene slams into our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Fisher. Bob?
Thank you. I'm Bob Gabriel from New Paltz, and I'm a resident of Doug Road, which is in floodplain. And I urge you to approve the proposed amendments by the town board to these floodplain laws. You know, any boy scout could protect the old lady from walking, from being hit by a car if you don't cross the street, you know? Yes, you can make laws, local laws, more stringent than what FEMA asks for. P.S., I wrote to FEMA and asked them what their requirements were, and they wrote back to me and said, "We don't have requirements. We leave it up to the individual states." So really, the state DEC is the person who's calling the shots on this, not FEMA. And the FEMA guidelines quoted to you were just that, they're guidelines, they're not statute. So I spoke to a fellow whose name is Steve Knopman. I spoke to him at the time that this law was originally passed. He's the guy in charge of all DEC regulations for local ordinances regarding floodplains. He's based in Albany. I went up to see him. We have three components of the floodplain law, and he told me, looked at them, and he was kind of amiss, because we at the town had only presented him with two. But nevertheless, the law was passed. A group of us, 40, decided to have a lawsuit. We sued on the aspect of seeker. We used very hard to have a lawsuit on the validity of a law, or what the town really wants, because the town really wants what the board say it wants. So we looked at seeker and a hard look, and we were not affected, and we lost the suit. But 60 people put up money for that lawsuit, and they were all residents of the floodplain. And we're very cognizant with the law. So here's what I said to the town board, and I want to say to you now. How many people do you think there are in that area that will come to you and say, "This is a good law. I really like it. Keep it in place." I will tell you right now, there are very, very, very few, probably none of the people who are residents in that area will come to you and say, "I'm in favor of this law." And how many people, conversely, who are in that floodplain district will come to you and say, "I'm very, very upset with it, and it needs to be amended." And I'll tell you, it's very, very many, if not every single solitary one of them. Now, not only that, but recently, the town board, I went to him and I told him, JFK, John Kennedy quote, he said, "A mistake is an error you fail to correct." This law, as it was passed, was a mistake, an error, and it needs to be corrected, and the present town board is taking that notable step. Lastly, Mr. Knopman said to me these words, that he had reviewed 800 local laws, 800, and he had no recollection of any community save New Paltz that had imposed restrictions on building when a driveway or public road went below, 1.5 feet below BFE. None, zero zilch, none except us. So yes, can we be more stringent? Yeah, I guess we can, and we're that, we're that boy scout who's not going to let the lady cross the road, not going to let that lady enjoy traversing the road or living in her own house. So this thing is onerous, it's preposterous, and one last thing. Stacy Delarade, our professional in the, in our professional in the floodplain law, the building inspector, came to us and euphemistically said, at the time of the passage of this law, that we were told by the board that we needed this law or else we couldn't get floodplain, flood insurance. And she said we were mistaken, we were given mistaken information. And that's euphemistic. It means we had a serious misrepresentation. We could get it, and we should have gotten it, and at that time, I asked Mr. Knopman, and he said, "If your town had adopted the state building codes, which we had at the time of the passage of our law, it was sufficient to meet any of his needs and FEMA's needs." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. All right, all right. We don't cheer, we don't boo, so not the planning board. You may do it in other meetings, but not here.
Truly. Yep.
Thank you again for your time. I saw on the agenda you're going to be looking into some issues related to CBS, so I thought I would just take a moment to just state that I certainly do feel that the, that an EIS is warranted, and that the studies so far are very limited, including traffic, including wetlands, I won't name them all, but the, one thing I wanted to point out is I was in traffic at that intersection on a Wednesday at 4:15, and there was gridlock. So I know that wasn't reflected in the, in the traffic study. But one of the things, really briefly, I wanted to mention is about the wetlands, you know, in the wetlands report, there were, there was a wetland identified on the site that was large enough to possibly be considered a quality vernal pool. As I pointed out at one point, it's, it's, there's no way to determine whether it fits the definition of a quality, quality vernal pool in July. The creatures that you would need to identify are just not there. That all happens in the spring. So I hope that can be looked into further. But one more thing is that I just, we haven't identified whether the wetlands, that study did not identify whether the wetlands are hydrologically connected to the nearby wetlands, and there may be implications, because the wetlands on one side is DEC-protected, on the other side, it's, it's a thriving wetland, and I'm not sure of its status, but either way, it's also in the watershed of the Milburgh Preserve, which we all know that that's something important to keep in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to make a public comment? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the application reviews now. Thank you. Hold on. Well, I'd like to, just for the board, those, basically, you gave us pictures, but kind of go over the displays of what you have here, so we understand what we're looking at.
Sure. So what we have here, which we also have in front of this planning board, our plans for what is really a very simple, straightforward project. It'll serve 850 acres of land for farmland, for woodland, for wetland, and also to create a limited, appropriately scaled public access to this land, to a safe off-road parking area, a primary one and a secondary one. So there are many images here, but they're really all of the same two major elements of this project. The first is the testimonial gateway, and we have, as shown here, over 800 feet from the intersection of Gatehouse Road, as referenced on tonight. To avoid that intersection, 800 feet plus to the west, we have an entrance to the first trailhead parking area, the primary one. That goes in 80 feet through a wooded area into an interior trailhead parking area that will be surrounded by woods and have woods in the center. And that will include, that'll be a 90-car lot, which includes, those 90 cars include three bus, four horse trailer parking spaces. And that will really honor the historic and cultural aspects of this important landscape. We, after considering alternatives that were discussed for other entrances that would use the old testimonial gateway, the Lenape Lane, up to the testimonial gateway, we moved away from those, also in consultation with the Historic Preservation Commission, to really honor the, the landscape design concept, the mid-18th, 19th century landscape design concept of reveal, concealed, reveal, which is famous at Alana, Montgomery Place, and many other places in the Hudson River Valley. And that is, you see the beautiful testimonial gateway. It's iconic, it's mysterious. You then drive past it, and then come in an entrance through the woods where you can park, where it's then again revealed to you. And that would be at this location. So you're coming in off 299, as proposed, simple entrance, and you get to the end of the parking lot, and there's a, like all Mohawk Preserve parking off, trailheads, which we have four on the ridge currently. There's a three-sided open-air kiosk, there's a set of outdoor bathrooms that are basically vault toilets, and those would be the two main structures at that entranceway. They're both diminutive structures. Then there would be a trail that takes you in either direction. There's a physical barrier so you can't be along it right to the historic structure. We want to protect that foreground. But you'd be able to walk around and come in to the, from the east and experience that grand entrance, or you'll be able to go from the west and come out moving towards the ridge. So then, if you reorient, so we've been looking kind of from the east now, we're looking from the west back towards the testimonial gateway. There's an oak ballet that was planted in 1908 by the Smiley's. Those trees are over 100 years old, many of them are still living, but we've planted a nursery of the next generation, the next century of oak on the property. The only structure beyond the testimonial gateway area is a small, open-air Mohawk-style summer house, or gazebo. This would hold maybe, maybe six people at the most. It's a place where you can stop and take advantage of this beautiful view, but it's a place that's accessible for people maybe with lower mobility challenges or can't walk a long distance. Then you would enjoy this beautiful oak ballet, this designed entrance to Mohawk, that was created in 1908 out of agricultural fields, and you would cross the Lenape Lane Bridge. We'll keep the abutments and the wing walls exactly the same, so the bridge will not be raised in height, the bridge will not be widened, so it will still serve as the pinnant for traffic coming. And then we will replace it with a typical lightweight recreational bridge structure like we have in the time of Marble Town, the Cedar Drive Bridge, which both is overpassed by County Route 6, Mohawk Road. That's the only other structure, and that's about a half mile west of this little gazebo. Now, secondly, is the farther west. When we first started, we proposed 130-car lot, a single block here. After over 30 meetings with neighbors in the community, we heard loud and clear that that was too big. So we reduced the size of this lot by 35% to 90 cars. We did move 20 of the cars to a west, a more westerly location, also recommended by the neighbors. And that is at what we call the Hasbrook House. This is the Hasbrook House here. It was built in 1890s by the Smiley's to replace an earlier house, a house that was owned by the Dusine that was on that site. And at Hasbrook House, you've got a residential driveway. By the way, the former tenant of Hasbrook House said he was evicted. He was not evicted. He had a lease. He chose not to renew. In any case, that house will remain not part of the site plan. It's simply a residential house, and there will be a small 20-car lot at the very back of that field tucked in the edge of the woods. This will also be something that can be used at certain times for members-only parking, for local residents who may have to compete to get on the ridge on busy weekends. It'll be used during the weekdays to serve schoolchildren in the Preserve's K through eight, our mental school field studies program. From that lot, you'll be able to walk, this is actually an old remnant of the historic Owe Warsen Turnpike in 1856. It became the public road over the mountain until 1945, when 299 was built. We're going to use a portion of that old road as an entrance, which has already been converted into a residential driveway, and we're going to preserve intact one of the most intact sections, that old Owe Warsen Turnpike, from between here and Owe Warsen, and that will remain a grass trail. And so when you, when you get out, your park here, and you get out, you'll be able to walk on a nature plank walkway that will be at 30 inches above the wetland, and will be on helical piers so that it can, it's basically not a permanent structure. It's not footed in concrete. Water can flow underneath it, animals can migrate underneath it. So it's part of the eco-permeability of that wetland. And that will convey you about 850 feet along the northern edge of that wetland out to an area we call the Prominent, which is right here. The Prominent is actually above and outside of the wetland boundary, and it's an area that has glacial erratic holders that were deposited in a beautiful clump of trees, the perfect place to watch wildlife at the edge of that marsh. And at that location, we will have a semi-open-air rustic wildlife viewing blind, like you see in many Audubon sanctuaries and elsewhere, where, which will be handicap accessible all the way out. The only other structure proposed in this part of the site is along that Owe Warsen Turnpike, and this is the only, you know, really enclosed structure, other than the visitor contact station at the main trailhead or the bathrooms. And this will be a 900-square-foot education cabin. This is a place where schoolkids can get out of a heavy weather episode or have a focused classroom experience in connection with coming to this part of the Preserve. The, we don't have graphics of the third area, which is way up on the mountain, some of the planning board members visited it, and that would be another similar, very sort of semi-rustic shelter for schoolchildren up on the old Kleinhill Farm Road, near, near Farm Pond there, a man-made farm pond. So really, this is a very simple proposal. It's a larger parking area, a smaller parking area, and the restoration of existing trails, existing bridge, and creating very small, modest, rustic, open-air wayside facilities that you would see anywhere else on the Preserve that will help people enjoy, experience, be oriented to the land, and be inspired really by their connection to nature.
Okay.
Our consultants in Barton will answer here if there's anyone to add to that.
Just some things about the renderings too. This is really great CAD software that was used to do them, but you kind of have to make some concessions to reality with some things. You know, you can see that the software kind of shows some abrupt edges in a lot of places. That's really not what the intent of the, of the site plan is. It's really going to be natural surfacing, remaining natural plantings, just the way they look today. The other thing is, looking at this would lead you to believe that all of the pavement is going to be an asphalt surface. In reality, it's all going to be a natural gravel surface, which will blend in much better with the existing, the existing surroundings. I think, Clement, the road is actually 180 feet, the entrance, and we made it longer because we wanted to make sure we had queuing for as many cars as possible, and get assigned cars with the 180 feet.
That's where the nine came from, cars.
A couple of things have kind of changed a little bit from earlier versions of the plan. We're showing this, this large kiosk here, and I think we're showing, we have a simpler kiosk at Hasbrook House.
Right.
These are not buildings. This is an open pavilion structure, very simple rustic architecture, and it's really intended to have a lot of interpretive information, educational information, rules of use information. Let's see. I think that was about it. Something else?
I was just pointing out to me that I used the word buses before, as you'll see in the pictures, those are school buses. That's how kids get to our property.
Also, the, the structure at Farm Pond is going to be an open-air structure, it's not a closed structure at all.
It's not like the structure you have on Owe Warsen Turnpike, but you're proposing up on the Farm Pond is substantially smaller and different, yeah.
Something more like a lean-to, it hasn't been shown.
Probably closer to the, the blind than, than the natural. It's okay. What I had proposed to do is to start looking through the environmental assessment form, similarly to the way we've done it on other projects, not so much to close out the issues, but to address which- Not so much to close out the issues, but to address which issues are levels of significance, I think, I would best term on it.
Can I ask just a couple of questions?
Only a couple?
Okay. Yeah, everybody. On the testimonial gateway, currently parking in the entrance, what are you doing to prevent that? Is it still, it's still going to be there? How are you going to control it?
Yeah, Ted, Ted can answer that better, but we don't have a visual here. But right now, it's that big, you know, there's a big Y intersection, and then there's a big area in front of the gate where people just cram their cars in. We're not encouraging that parking, but there's no, no roadside parking restriction in place there. What we're going to do is turn that to a T and manscape it. So it will still be administrative access to the Preserve, like for our ranger trucks, but we'll actually grass up that hole, that area, so people won't be able to park there.
So this is, this is where the Lenape Lane Gatehouse, right now, this is all Y intersection.
Right.
So we'll be turning that into a T intersection of the Lenape Lane and restoring all of this.
So what are you doing about preventing the parking in this area?
What we're going to do is displace some, some glacial red holders that are around the site to sort of create a hollow.
Both sides.
To eliminate access, yeah.
Both sides, both sides of the road.
Of this, I don't, I don't know that we would need them on this side.
You're parking here now.
Are they on this side?
Yes, sir. And I, I believe in the previous meetings, it was saying that there was going to be a ranger on weekends to control and help control the parking. And basically, over the past two weekends, that was now down to a one-way highway.
And that's one of the reasons why this is one of the, believe me, the parking lot will, will.
As far as that, that little section of gatehouse road, I want to talk to Chris Marks about what we can do, both from the way gatehouse comes into two ninety-nine and what kind of room we have, since we have an applicant. Maybe we can do something to improve that intersection from the town.
My question is drainage on the north on two ninety-nine coming down. How, how is the drainage from the entrance here going to be handled going down towards New Paltz area?
Okay. What we have is green infrastructure incorporated into where you can plan here. So we'll be intercepting all of the drainage, oh, drainage into some dry swales first. This all gets routed into a bio-retention area, and the drainage down this side goes into another bio-retention area here. So we have a whole series of these bio-retention areas, which will, it's dependent both poker the runoff of the parking areas and to attenuate the flow coming out.
So the runoff from the parking area is not going to come out along the side of two ninety-nine?
It, it does outlet into the swell on two ninety-nine.
Okay. So this volume of water on the swell on two ninety-nine, where is it going?
It goes in two directions, actually. It goes, there's a high point at some spot here, which faces this part of the range into this culvert, which goes back into Jacob's Lane and then crosses further now. And then what we have here, the outlet is coming into this part of the swell here, will go down to this, this twenty-four inch culvert here, and that goes across.
Excuse me, can I see that since I'm on Jacob's Lane?
No.
I'm only doing that.
He's pointing where he's pointing, it's on Jacob's Lane.
The part of the runoff is, is coming from the natural runoff of the site, is coming down through the seasonal stream, off the ditch here, I think there's a high point out here. So that part of it comes down to this culvert, which is further up two ninety-nine from Jacob's Lane. Our runoff, after it gets treated and attenuated comes out here, goes down the swell to this culvert. This is the one that you can see clearing out after they clear the vegetation out. So that cross is here.
So it's going to be on two properties, Jacob's Lane crossing this property.
This, this is an existing culvert.
I know, but.
But it also comes out over in this area. Yep, there's an existing culvert right here, right through this culvert. So it's going on to first property on the left.
It's always really wet over there.
Well, it's going to be a lot wetter now.
Professor Chen, well, can I ask the? Hold on, hold on, one at a time. I just want to.
Public here.
We didn't, never mind, just, okay.
Can I just have one more question?
Yeah.
You're disturbing a, a pretty good center of wildlife in that area where you're putting a parking lot. Where do you anticipate that wildlife going when you put two hundred people into this area and the wildlife's going to go somewhere, but they're not going to be around two hundred people? Where, where do you anticipate this wildlife to go?
We did a threatened endangered species. We had our field staff come out and look at this area. The Mohawk Preserve's field staff also looked at it, and there's no endangered species here.
I'm not worried about endangered species, I'm worried about you're parking ninety-three cars where there's deer, there's deer, other things, where are they going to go when we do this?
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere.
It might be worth noting that the footprint of that parking is one point four acres. So, you know, we're retaining the natural vegetation around it, we're retaining the eco-permeability through the site for wildlife to move and migrate.
And you're also importing a home over two hundred people into that area, in that small area as well, of maybe five or six acres. And I was just curious of your anticipation where it's going to go.
Well, that area, you know, for over a hundred years has been farmed, it's had public access to it. And if you walk down the oak ballet today through that pond area, you'll see that there's a muskrat living in that pond, there are kind of geese, which we all know are all too hungry, right around here. There, there is wildlife that is in that area, and there is currently a lot of use in that area. We're trying to formalize the use to the safe off-road parking and really do that in a way that optimizes and protects the land so there's plenty of room for the wildlife, especially the prominent species that live in that area to, continue to live in that area.
One of the important factors that we knew in the site of the parking area was, if you look at the historic aerial photos of the gatehouse site, this area was a long. So all of the vegetation here is kind of emergent. If you, if you go and look up to this area, there's a lot of evergreens that were probably like hedging plants or something that have all become overgrown and have kind of died from the bottom off of it, just a little tassel at the top. So in terms of habitat, we chose the most, the least impactful part of the site to focus.
I guess one thing, and then I'm going to shut up and get out of here. This culvert that's going to carry this water.
It's a swell.
Okay. Well, it's pretty deep, a pretty deep swell. And the cars that back up, if you have nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and you start going over to the side, they're going to end up in there. If it's the way it is right now, that's going to be a problem.
On the diagram, it looks like there's a turning light?
That's up by there.
So that's what we're pointing, that's what we're pointing to right there. Here it shows no turning light on your diagram, I believe it shows a turning light.
There is no turning light marked, so we're actually, that might have been an older part of the.
Okay, so the gentleman's concern of that ditch in the parking right there, it is something you're going to have to address.
Yeah, one of the things that we'll talk about in our, when we do the transportation impacts is initially, our entrance was a lot closer to the road. We moved it back so that we could accommodate a nine-car queue. We also made some modifications to the, to the entrance here so that we can have kind of a bypass setup, so we can sit there and if it's really visible, two attendants there, it's also so the ranger can get through. We studied during the peak times, West Trappes. We had some of our engineers sitting out there doing accounts on the busiest weekends. This was back in twenty thirteen, and that's how we came about it. There were never more than two or three cars backed up in West Trappes. I think the entrance is probably, the gate is only.
Fifty feet.
Yeah, fifty feet from the road, so basically a two-car queue. We saw two to three cars queue up on the road at that entrance where we did that study.
Can you speak to this Plan B that we've heard mentioned and your thoughts on it, or other board members in the Land Act of Manhattan, if that is viable?
I can, I can answer the, there, there is no Plan B in this, in this presentation before the board.
Well, I mean, the Plan B from the twenty twelve, yeah.
That's not part of, that's not part of the.
Well, I just wonder, you know, it's talked about generally, it was brought up.
It was basically using, it was using, it was using gatehouse as the access in, and I think in their deliberations, the name was, it was.
Changing driveways around, I just want to hear all the, you know, work here, thought about things.
Well, I'll put it this way, from my point of view, getting in on gatehouses isn't bad, getting out on gatehouse is terrible. So I think from a safety point of view, I would probably not want to do that unless we did some major work on Gatehouse Road.
Yeah.
Because it's, people have mentioned it now, getting out on gatehouse is bad enough.
I mean, I think it's, I mean, it is such a dangerous intersection, it's one we need to really look at super carefully. I guess it's not a thing for Chris Marks, but is it worth bringing up with DOT changing the speed limit of two ninety-nine?
Well, I.
We can't do that, but because.
The town, I, I, I think, yeah, we'll finish getting through that, but on transportation.
Okay.
Here, I'll keep that out.
Yeah.
I think there's a consensus around us on it that, that they should do a speed limit on it. And I think some of the numbers that we've talked about, that Ron brought up about the amount of people that are going to Minnabaska and the amount of people that are going to Mohawk, especially during its concentrated area, timeframes, that you should take a hard look at, at that. But it, it would have to be a request from the town board and to DOT, but certainly can be something that we can recommend as being done.
We have like two questions, and I know we want to move on, but just really easy, just things to think about later and add. We mentioned before, like, just explicitly writing a ban on events requiring tents and things like that, just so I, it doesn't seem that the, you know, the aim of the project is to have tons of weddings there, or just so we can, or any wedding there, maybe a tiny one, anyway, just so we can have that be really clear, because, you know, we've heard a lot about.
Well, wait, let me, let me go. You know, just to have a theory. So Mohawk have a policy on use of the property by outsiders?
Yeah, the Preserve has a pavilion that we use as a member service facility, and that's where we hold weddings at a member's request. And those are limited with all kinds of impact criteria for noise, for.
Could we get a copy of the policy?
Sure, but that, that's, that's the center where.
That, but at a different location.
This is not anticipated.
Right.
Just to make it totally clear.
Okay.
Also, we have a visitor's center on Route two ninety-nine, Route forty-four fifty-five. That has rentable spaces, including our inside exhibit hall and our outside roof terrace. Those are other places where we might entertain a member event or, but we don't contemplate doing that at this site.
So you would be agreeable?
Do you have night-time programs?
We do occasionally, yes.
You do? Okay, well, there's overnight stay at?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, we don't have any overnight uses.
Okay, and how late would these night-time programs go on?
John wants here, not me, left. Our impact criteria for the rentals at the Spring Farm Pavilion, this little pavilion, I believe, is a ten o'clock limit, maybe earlier.
About the testimonial gateway, what would the hours be on that?
That would be like all, all Preserve facilities, that would be open till only one hour after sunset. And so that's basically a day-use facility, you know, we are a day-use facility in terms of hiking and general use of the Preserve.
Your other question?
Okay, I'm asked, oh, I just have one more question tonight. I know I've read it somewhere, but just to be totally clear, is the parking lot free? Do we have to pay to get in, or are there places we have to pay for parking?
You don't pay for parking if you're a member. Parking is unlimited, it's free for members. Membership is fifty-five dollars a year, or four dollars a month, or eighty-five cents a day. And if you're a non-member, we ask you to pay a twelve-dollar day fee. So parking is not fees, it's the per-person fee for the person.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking about the way that this takes away currently free open-air recreations for, well, we'll get to that, we'll talk about it. Okay, those are my questions.
I have a quick one for you. You were quick to say that we have school bus parking, does that mean that you guys are not going to be anticipating any type of tour buses?
We don't encourage tour buses, and we don't have a relationship with tour companies. It's very hard to prevent, especially this time of year, a school, a tour bus from pulling into our facility. And so we do try to accommodate, then if we have.
If you're going to be monitoring your parking lots, then, I mean, when a tour, a tour has to make a reservation with you?
That would typically be the case. We don't, we don't currently take tour reservations. We really try to divert those, you know, to Mohawk Mountain House or other places that might be more able to accommodate tour buses. But what is a challenge is this time of year, we get tour buses that just inadvertently pull in looking for a place. If we don't have a school bus or, or a horse trailer in that space, we will try to accommodate them. But typically, the use of that will be school buses during the week.
So I know you guys said that you're not planning on holding any types of weddings or affairs or tented events in that area, and I completely believe you. And I know that you do have other areas where you do it, but will you be able to give that to us in writing? Because you do have a lot of residents that are really concerned about that.
We actually already have held events on that property, and we do, we do preserve sponsored events like the Rock the Ridge event we've done for two years in a row on that property now. I, I don't know if you've ever had a neighbor complain from that.
Well, I think a Rock, a Rock the Ridge event is very different than an individual's wedding or something like that.
Right, so those do require tents, even though, you know, and other types of, you know, support infrastructure, sometimes four Johns and the like. So we, we will do a preserved event like Rock the Ridge on that property. We may, from time to time, want to have a small tent there to thank donors, for example, which we've also done out there. But in terms of renting the property for, you know, tented events, that is not, not a part of the plan.
So you're willing to put some restriction in that says that?
I think so.
Well, let's take a look at your policy first, and then, and then we'll talk about that.
You talked about school events, so are you doing free school events for Newport's schools in this gatehouse?
We do subsidized school events. So in Newport's, we deliver K through eight programs that are tied to New York State army standards and the core curriculum, it's now a STEM-based course, and we work in collaboration with classroom teachers, we do every grade level. We have a contract with Newport's schools that's actually.
I've been on a lot of trips, I know.
Okay, yeah, they're reimbursed by Bosse's fifty cents on the dollar. So the average, the cost to school kids is about six dollars per trip to the Mohawk Preserve.
And what about schools outside of the local area?
We will serve them on an ad hoc basis, either if they have an ability to pay and we can accommodate them within our schedule. Our top priority is the Newport's program, and they're really the anchor school group that we serve. But we do serve other, you know, school groups from Ulster County. We will, if we have grant funding or donor funding, we will serve some school groups from, like San Miguel Academy, which is an at-risk, at-risk youth school, from a private school from Newburgh, and now the Norah Cronin School, which is a sister academy for at-risk girls from inner-city Newburgh. They come from a very specialized program, because they're, those are small offerings. We serve High Meadow School and groups like that, but mostly it's the K through eight Newport's program, when they have an ability to come and serve on down at Ellendale or some of the other surrounding districts, at Walk Hill, Kingston, occasionally, but mostly it's Newport's.
So what is the plan for the, the policing in the area, I mean, with the rangers and, you know, it's like, maybe there's going to be one, there's not, or there're going to be rangers working every day in this area? Do they, do you have different ones on different shifts? Is there always two on a shift, like, how does that really work?
Sure. We have trailhead assistants whose job is to be at those fixed positions and meet and greet and orient the public. And they're trained in customer service, visitor service, and they're really our first, you know, people who accommodate the, the entering visit. We do have professionally trained rangers, we have a ranger. We do have professionally trained rangers, um, we have a ranger corps, four full-time, three full-time rangers, a ten-month ranger, and about a half a dozen seasonal rangers. They are always patrolling the property, they're rowing, they're checking.
Do you expect to have new jobs, um, do you expect to have new jobs at the completion of the property?
There will, yeah, there will be added hours, and certainly new jobs in rotation as a result of this, there'll probably be more, several TA shifts or, you know, um, those are all part-time seasonal positions, but we will have to add staff to and add to this property.
So, so many, um, community members would love to see you guys give a dollar or two off your, um, admission back to the plan. And I know, like, in the past, you guys didn't want to, but, no, I'm just putting it out there, maybe you guys want to think about it, this is a pretty big project. Um, the town could really use the money, we have police and ambulances and all kinds of stuff that we really can't, barely afford. We have a crumbling infrastructure, um, so if you guys could help out, you're going to be getting a lot of new customers, and I would feel, I would feel really good if you guys had, I know you give back a lot, and I know we all benefit from a lot of different parts of this project, kids and trails. Um, but I would really love to see that type of gesture, it would really make me feel great.
We're, we're very concerned, sensitive to, you know, the burdens on the taxpayer and municipal budget. And, you know, we do make a voluntary contribution currently, and every town we serve, we make contributions to ambulance squads that, that service our property. I would expect certainly that in New Paltz, although they, they have not made a call in the last two years to our property. It was misrepresented, there were sixty calls to our property last year, actually, there were zero last year, and to date in twenty fifteen, there are zero. Obviously, that could change once they had a trailhead there, so we, we recognize that. To, to create a discounted fee for people based on geographic origin, though, would probably run counter to our nonprofit mission, and it would be very difficult to, to create, you know, a different type of access at one trailhead than another, because we have trailheads in, in four towns, we're in parts of five towns. So we would be probably looking to do something a little bit more along the lines of what we do now, which is, you know, to try to really give back some kind of voluntary payment, um, you know, that supports, uh, the town. But taking funds and giving them to the town's general fund from.
Well, even, even, you know, donations to a police department, we have a five-and-a-half-million-dollar police department that we have to operate. Even if people aren't calling every day, you come to preserve, it's nice to know that we have a five-and-a-half-million-dollar police department if you need us.
Absolutely.
Okay, can I get on to my environmental assessment form? Um, I sent out in, in the agenda, there's a, um, listing of numbers and then, and what we're really trying to do out of the, um, eighteen categories, similar to what we've been talking to do with CBS, is to go down each of the questions and go through each of the Part Two questions on the EAF, and, and determine, um, again, from a, from information we have, um, is there little?
Do you have a blank EAF form?
Oh, good grief. Um, to go through it, to see, is it small or no impact? Either it's a large impact, do we have anything, studies that are associated with it? Um, the idea tonight is to go over these, um, ones that I have numbered and make a determination. It is not a final determination by no means, but, um, it gives us an ability to at least recognize what we have and don't have. And if we're not comfortable doing one section tonight, we'll just move it off the table. I, what I tried to do on, on this first go-around is to get into areas that are not, um, high-profile, I'll put it that way. And, uh, Bill's going to walk us, uh, through each like Dave generally does. I'd like to, you know, if you've got questions on it, um, stop them, um, and, um, that's, that's air it out. But my, my goal is to try to get through, uh, these, and as you can see, there's quite a few numbers, but I think a lot of them aren't, have, have really no impact, and that's why they're there, but that's not to say, um, if you've got a question, we can't stop it. So Billy, want to start walking through the EAF and?
Okay, we'll get started, item number two, impact on geological features, on page two. Proposed action may result in modification or destruction of, or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landform on the site. Uh, so we identify the specific landforms, and we've talked about it, uh, the glacier erratic boulders. Some of them will be, uh, maybe the smaller ones may be relocated to help identify, um, parking areas or whatever. But, uh, but that, I consider that like a small or no impact may occur under A. Um, the proposed action may affect the, or is adjacent to a geological feature listed and a registered national natural landmark. As far as I know, we don't have any in this area within the, uh, the project area, and no other impacts I could think of. So what we did was, uh, we have three check, two checkmarks under no or small impact, leave it at that. Okay, any questions?
Okay.
Next would be item number four, which is on page three, impact on groundwater. Proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have a potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer. So under A, proposed action may require new wells, we will have no new wells as far as I know, um, so that'll be a no. Water supply demand for the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal, that'd still be the same thing, it'd be no. Proposed action may allow a result in residential use in areas without water and, or sewer services, that's another no, I think.
They're going to have the vaulted, uh, toilet facilities that are going to get pumped out every two weeks, so there's no need for any septic fields or anything like that on the site.
Right. No subsurface disposal systems. Um. Did I have D already?
No, he can start D again.
Uh, D, proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge or groundwater, like Michael said, you know, we have no septic system or anything. E, proposed action may result in construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is or is expected to be contaminated. Again, no supply wells, so that's another no. F, proposed action may require bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or aquifer. Again, that's another no, not being proposed. G, proposed action may involve commercial application of pesticides within a hundred feet of potable drinking water or irrigation sources. As far as we know, uh, that will probably, there might be a small impact with a little bit of the pesticide you, or Howard, pest control, the program that you have.
Right, and we currently don't have a pest control program in any of our trailheads, but it's conceivable that there might need to be at some point in time, you know, some application, um, that would certainly be within the legal limits, it wouldn't be, you know, uh, meet any, I would quote, you know, thresholds for commercial application.
Right, right.
Would you be interested in looking at integrated pest management, which is practice, so if you could?
For farm community on.
Right. Perhaps you could incorporate that into a narrative.
Right.
So G is.
On the, uh, the ponds, now that, uh, definitely in the gateway, how are you going to reclaim them? And is pesticides going to be used in that, in that declaration?
No, there's, there will be no disturbance of those ponds.
So you're not going to, you're just going to leave them the way they are?
Correct. You'll never use pesticides in the areas of the ponds, you'll permit through there in your state.
Tom, and, and here, uh, just, just for my efficiency of getting through this, that's surface water. Item three, we didn't cover it, because I figured there'd be more questions on that one. So hold on to that, let's put it, and we'll document it when we come back to do surface water.
Uh, H, other impacts, proposed action may result in discharge of treated stormwater. Uh, we've got biotention basins, so, but I consider that a no or a small impact may occur. So that takes care of item four, okay? Item six on page four, impacts on air. That pretty much is all no right there, you know, when you start reading some of these impacts here, you talk about, you know, more than a thousand tons per year of carbon dioxide, you know, I don't know. Uh, proposed action may generate ten tons a year of hazardous air pollutant. Or proposed action may require state air registration, or may reach fifty percent of any threshold A through C. Or may result in combustion of thermal, or thermal treatment, more than one ton of refuse per hour. Be no burning of refuse or anything else like that, so that one right there is just a right-off no. Okay, next item is number nine. Excuse me, it's on page six. Impacts on aesthetic resources. Land use proposed actions are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to the current land use patterns between a proposed project and a scenic aesthetic resource. Okay, A, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic aesthetic resource. I think, uh, you know, it's going, that would be a no or a small, very small. I don't know of any, you know, others thing right there. B.
It's not visible from any area?
What?
It's not visi, it's not going, none of this is going to be visible from any place further, uh, north? The construction's going to be visible?
During construction, you're going to see some.
No, but after construction.
After construction.
Well, this is.
I think you've got a lot of vegetation, are you going to be?
Route two ninety-nine is a state designated scenic byway, and we really chose the location in the woods with a hundred-eighty-foot entrance and retaining the mature woods for that reason. So the parking lot would be minimally visible. Um, second, secondly, the, the second parking lot is at the back of this field, it'll be minimally visible. The, the land actually goes up and then down in this field, so there's a, there's a rise in the middle of this field. And you, when you're driving, about three-quarters of this frontage, the cars are not, cars, you can't see a car from here or that, or vice versa because of the rise of this field. Right about here, you can start to see back there, which is why we propose vegetative screening for this twenty-car lot, so that it will ultimately blend in and look like the edge of that woods, and the parking will be behind it. So those are the two areas that would have been visible on the state's byway.
Yep, um, one of the other things is, um, the choice of, of materials that are going to be used. We're using rustic and natural materials, there'll be timber, stone, gravel, and it'll all blend well into the agricultural landscape in the context of the project.
I didn't.
Item B, proposed action may result in obstruction, elimination, or significant screening. C, proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, i.e., screened by summer fully but visible during other seasons, year-round. And just like what we were explaining, no or minimal, a very, very small impact. D, situation or activity in which the viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action. Routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, recreation or tourism-based activity.
One question on that one, do you allow deer hunting? Where do you allow deer hunting?
We allow deer hunting in specific zones on the preserve, this entire foothills area, though, is not a regular deer hunting area. It's a special, um, permit only, um, and we only authorize a handful of really competent hunters. In fact, most of the hunters we are allowed to hunt on this property, and there are only about four or five of them. Are, many of them are police officers or other, um, people very familiar with the use of firearms. On much of the rest of our property, um, you know, we do allow hunting, but obviously, we don't allow it per state law within five hundred feet of residents. Uh, we have certain areas that are, are hunting-free zones, um, including, um, all, our interior boundary with the Mohawk Mountain House. So there, um, we could certainly show you a hunting map of the property, um, it would be timely, next, next meeting.
Is it gatehouse?
So the gatehouse, the entire foothills area is really not a regular hunting zone on the preserve, so.
You say not, not yellow, what do you mean?
Meaning that.
You only let five people that are around there.
Right, right.
But are they going to be, those five people are going to be hunting there when you have two hundred people there?
Oh, I just wonder how deer hunting interacts, like, if I go up in November fifteenth and, you know, rifle season in Ulster County opens up, and I'm.
Sure.
How, how's that work? I think we just want to get a feel of what goes on.
So the preserve, uh, even though Ulster County is a rifle county, we don't allow rifles, we only allow shotgun. And we don't allow any small game hunting, we don't allow any sighting in, uh, we do allow, um, bow hunting. We allow shotguns during regular hunting season, and we allow the other types of, of guns besides rifles all the way up to the end of the season, which is around December twenty-first. We have about, we have a hunting permit system, which is revocable, um, so that any hunter, you know, who's found to be out of bounds or in any way not observing our rules, we can pull his or her permit. And, um, you know, we, we issue, I would say, about, about two hundred to two hundred and fifty permits a year. How many of those actually hunt, and far fewer even get a deer? Um, because we, the hunting take on average is about sixty deer per year on the preserve, so we really have tried over the years to cultivate hunters as responsible volunteers who are helping with our deer ecology program, to help manage the balance of a healthy deer herd, uh, and balance with the rest of the ecosystem. Um, and as a result, we, we've really cultivated hunters to have a long-term knowledge of the property, a high hunter's success rate. And, um, we're, we, you know, we really think the program is somewhat of a model, it's modeled after Care Institute of Ecosystem Studies and some other, um, ecological preserves that really look at deer as part of the ecosystem.
Okay, copy of your program?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, well, and with Mike's question, I think what he's trying to ask is that there is deer hunting permitted right now currently, right where your parking lot's going? How, how, uh, what are you going to do about that? Is there going to be, are you going to provide in your site plan a, a designated hunting area? Or is it going to maintain, uh, still be the same?
We, we can certainly look at whether, um, you know, hunters would need to stay out of that area. Obviously, if, if it's within five hundred feet of a residence, um, you can't shoot, not be in that area anymore. Um, that's, we really don't have hunting at our trailhead areas, uh, it's really one of the backcountry activities, so I see what you're saying.
So the answer's no, you're, you're, you're not going to allow hunting in that area?
You're not going to allow anything within five hundred feet of this area?
I, I, I guess, well, I guess just to clarify, the policy on deer hunting, and if you can, in this, this eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven acres, mark up what is considered where you allow deer hunting.
That's where you allow deer hunting, but where you are within, uh, the range of five hundred feet or whatever, that's recent, makes it reasonably safe. I mean, just to keep it out of this specific area doesn't do it, it has to be a range, uh, like another five hundred feet around this area with no hunters.
I just, I just want to see just where he's, yeah, where he has it all tall. I mean, this is really all open here anyway, and shooting along two ninety-nine isn't really a good thing.
Right, and under state law, you can shoot across the road.
Yeah.
Right.
Deer five hundred feet from the road.
It sounds familiar, like what vascicology has to do from time to time, which is very restrictive. Yeah, and everybody goes to court.
Very special hunters.
Yeah, I know, that's not called air. Okay, I, I just, that's all I'm looking for on, on D, is just, um, just to respond to the deer hunting and.
I just want to clarify if we're still on aesthetics, or we moved ahead to recreation?
Well, it's, it's, no, it's recreation, tourist-based activities, I thought deer hunting was recreation.
So that's number eleven?
So that's number 11.
No, wait a minute.
No. Nine.
Time out.
We can pick it up on open space, too.
Okay. Can I go to G now?
Yep.
What we have down, that Ted gave us, was the proposed action may involve installation of signage to allow for safe and managed access to the project site. So that would probably be your own impact, it might have some signage.
Well, signage will have to go through the, uh-
But that's a potential impact. I think it's very, very small.
Okay. Any other questions on aesthetic resources?
Okay, go ahead on to number 11 on page seven, please. Impact in open space and recreation. Actually may result in loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Excuse me. Proposed action may result in impairment of natural functions or ecosystem services provided by an undeveloped area, including by a lot limited to stormwater storage. Nutrients recycling well habitat, I see that as a no. B, proposed action may result in loss of current or future recreational resource.
It's kinda funny because the issue of paying, you know, this is like D, it is an informal open space resource parts of it. And if now people are being made to pay, how does that impact?
It's always been, it's always been private.
Yeah.
That's, that's the, the prux of it. It's used, people have used private property, now someone wants, who uses private property wants a card for it.
Yeah, I can understand that.
That's what I keep falling back on, I understand.
C, proposed action may eliminate open space or recreational resource in an area with few such resources. That's another no also. Proposed action may result in loss in area now or informally by the community as an open space resource. Another no.
Yeah, I think that we've just, when we write that up, just noted that it was private property all along, has been used, but still remains private property.
Number 12, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I completely used to talk about Butterville because that is just a street. And that is that, could that be a loss of open space, well, I don't know, just thinking it off the top of my head. If people, okay, nevermind, nevermind, I got an idea, I'll write it down there.
Okay.
Doesn't impact us, okay.
Okay. But no, yeah, don't lose it, okay? I'm, I'm, okay. My favorite one. Number 12.
Impact on critical environmental areas.
We don't have any.
We don't have any, do we?
No.
That's an easy one. Number 14, impact on energy. May cause in use, increase in the use of any form of energy. A, require new or upgrade of an existing substation. I don't think so on that one.
No.
B, proposed action will require creation and extension of energy transmission or supply system. No, I don't think so. C, proposed action may utilize 2,500 megawatt, megawatt, megawatt hours per year of electricity. I don't think so. D, proposed action may involve heat or cooling more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed. Nope.
Is there any heating or cooling in any of those structures?
Uh, in the, you got a wood stove in the classroom.
Right, right.
That's the only one that I remember as being-
It's very possible that the visitor contact station, currently our visitor contact stations have no heating and cooling, but we are looking at the ones they have over in the hospital which have heating and cooling, so they can be all season. So there may be a small unit, you know, an air conditioner unit to service a 50-square-foot booth.
Yeah, solar power? Solar power?
So, yeah, you got all the trees up. You want the trees up or you want the solar power? Come on. All right. So we got a no on 14.
Pretty much, although there's a note here under. E, proposed action may result in additional use of energy. If we go into like a small, I don't know, wood stove.
No, there's always gonna be-
It's gonna be so de minimis. Extremely small, de minimis.
It's not near 100,000 square foot buildings, so I don't-
Right, so. 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. Those actions may have an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. A, may produce a sound above the noise levels established by local regulation. If within the county you have regulations in terms of all your construction equipment having a certain DBA and all that other sort of thing. Proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed state senator, or nursing home. I don't think blasting is required or being contemplated. C, proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day. Let's hope not.
Well, I, I have the, you know, I could think it was vaulted toilets, but they have a, they're gonna be maintained on a two-week basis, so they're not there forever and ever.
Yeah, the vaulted toilet model that we're using has the vent pipes, they're colored black, and they're oriented so that the sun shines on those vents and it creates a psychic effect, so it brings fresh air into the vault and vents it out the top.
Except at night, right?
Well, it's, it's not open at night. Okay.
Proposed action may result in lights shining into adjoining properties. E, proposed action may result in lighting creating a sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. So all those are no's, or it's very small impact, if any.
Is there going to be any lighting and heating there?
So there are four lights proposed on the entire site plan. They will all be either on, they'll be on a timer to go off at one hour after sunset. And they will be LED, one on the ground.
There are LED cut lights that will only illuminate, LED lights are nice to work with because the LEDs can be pointed directly where LED lights actually focus the light there, so there won't be any sky glow. And illumination will just be in the areas where we want.
You're basically at the trailheads.
Okay? Last item, oh, I'm sorry. 16, impact on human health. May have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Proposed action located within another, again, 1,500 feet of a school, hospital, et cetera. B, site proposed action is currently undergoing remediation. No. C, there's a completed emergency spill remediation or completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to it, not that we know of. D, the site of the action is subject to institutional control limiting the use of property, easement or deed restriction. No. Proposed action may affect institutional control measures that were put in place to ensure that the site remains protective of environment and human health. No. Proposed action has inadequate control measures in place to ensure that future generation, treatment, and disposal of hazardous waste will be protective of the environment and human health. G, proposed action involves construction and modification of solid state management facility. I, proposed action may result in increase in the rate of disposal or processing of solid waste. No. Proposed action may result in excavation or disturbance of within 2,000 feet of a site used for disposal of solid hazardous waste. Not, no. K, proposed action may result in a migration of explosive gas from landfill site. Proposed action may result in the release of contaminant leachate. Excuse me. Another no there.
Mr. Kenlon, can I just note for the record, because there was a date before that there was a contamination site on the property. We actually worked with the Open Space Institute. Over $15,000 was spent remediating a farm dump on the property. Two underground petroleum storage tanks were removed. They've been left in the ground from the sale from Smiley's to OSI. And so it was a significant, we have DEC certificates for the remediated farm dumps.
Can you make a copy of that for us?
Sure.
Two farm dumps?
Was it two? I thought it was four. I think it was one farm dump and two petroleum storage tanks.
Is that the speaker that referred to a dump area? Is that consistent?
No, he was referring to the other side of 299, I thought. South of, the south side of 299 across from the Hump Bowl Marsh.
Oh, yeah, we don't know that.
I know you don't know that, but he, that's what I thought he was referring to, is, um... Okay.
Okay. DC still gets requested. 17, page 10, consistency with community plans. Proposed action is not consistent with adoption land use plans. A, proposed action whose components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. Not true. Proposed action will cause permanent population of the city, town, or village, which is the project is located to grow by 5 percent. No. Proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations. No. Proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans. No. Proposed action may cause a change in density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant, or is distant from existing infrastructure. No. Proposed action is located in area that are characterized by low density development that require new and expanded public infrastructure. G, proposed action may reduce secondary development impacts, i.e., residential, commercial development, not including the proposed action. No.
What I propose for, for the board and for the community is to focus on, at the next meeting, responses to land use, which is one, surface water, which is three, section five on flooding, with the boardwalk and the marsh I'm thinking of. Section 10, which refer, refers to historic and archaeological resources, and are, really one of 13 impact on transportation, traffic. I am, um, working on getting our-
Thank you very much.
Our wetlands inspector and our traffic consultant to be at the meeting. Questions come up, or if you find when you're reviewing that material you have questions, hopefully I'll have them here and present. I hope the, I would try to focus the public hearing on those areas that we just talked about, so people can raise any issues specifically on traffic, surface water, the numbers that I gave. And so we continue the public, I make a motion to continue the public hearing to the November 9th meeting, specifically focusing on land use, surface water, flooding.
Transportation and traffic?
Well, transportation is traffic, yes.
Okay, before we do that, can I just go back to my Butterville thing?
Oh!
Question, okay. Is this-
Can I finish my motion? Don't let you do it?
Oh, I didn't know that would preclude that.
No.
Okay, great.
No.
Great, then I second the motion.
Ooh, no, wouldn't you? Any further discussion, understanding of where we're going with this? All those in favor? All right. Next.
Okay, this might be a separate issue, but is the idea to have an actual enforced parking van on Butterville, is that even something that might sign like Mohawk Preserve enforced, but I'm just on here-
Well, it's town, that's a, town can put the signs up and, but we've talked about that back and forth a little bit, about signs up and enforcement and whether the town's comfortable doing it and whether we should be doing it. But I think that's-
I guess it's separate from this. Because, you know, we got a, a letter today in our email that, that was good about how Butterville Road itself is, is open space usage, you know?
Right.
And people go there to use it itself, not as a, what means to somewhere else. It was interesting, so, but yeah, I mean, I guess it's separate from this exact thing.
I, as part of, as part of this application and the OSI applications, if we look at having together, I think somewhere along the line we should come up to what we really think needs for Butterville Road. Because, like you said, it is recreational, Tom's very familiar with Butterville Road. Is it good for parking or not good for parking? I mean, October, it's, it's a mess. December, it's empty. I mean, let's, let's think about it. And, but I think we should, from a planning perspective, think what's the right thing to do for Butterville while we're looking at these things. And not lose track of that, okay? So we got in the parking lot to, to deal with it. I want to take a five-minute break. That's all I'm doing on Mohawk, which Charlie should be happy out back there. And change a few seats around, okay? Thanks.
Materials from a wetland or water body, the answer to that is no. The proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or entitled wetland, or in the bed or banks of any other water body. I put that as small impact. There is the filling of a small, isolated, unregulated wetland that's near the southeast corner of the site that was the depression that's in Norbert's report. E is the proposed action may create-
But is those are possible rural areas, it may be?
Actually, it's not, according to Norbert, and he had something that I got right before I came to the meeting. He had a discussion of that. I can read you just a little excerpt from it. "In order to serve as significant amphibian breeding habitat, they must be of suitable size and depth to maintain adequate duration of springtime inundation to accommodate the amphibian aquatic life cycle." And we went on to say that this site is not suitable as an amphibian breeding habitat. The small, shallow depressions that are inundated for very short time periods, such as the small, isolated wetland on the site, is not suitable. Since in addition, they do not provide other functions and benefits associated with the common definition of vernal pools. It is likely that the small depressions occur on-site, that other small depressions occur on-site, given the fairly thorough site inspection conducted last July. The soils and topography are not indicative of conditions for the formation of vernal pools on the site.
He doesn't give any reasons why he says, he doesn't think they are important.
Well, he does say reasons.
He's saying that you really need the right soils, and you need to have a inundation for a time in the springtime, that's really long period. Also-
There wasn't anybody there in the springtime, so.
Peter, if you saw this little depression, you'd hardly recognize it.
No, I didn't see it.
It's just a couple inches deep. It's-
And there was no vegetation around it?
No, and he has some other information here about hydroperiods, that usually vernal pools are kind of a string of depressions in a forest, and they have some depth, and they have a hydroperiod that is conducive to amphibian breeding. This one drives up really quickly.
Okay, so you think it's not deep enough to even in the spring, hold enough water to be in, or it's just a couple inches?
It's very, very shallow.
We will, you know, we just came in fresh off the press, off the, whatever that term. But we'll get it to everybody, and like I said, if there's questions about that, or what Norbert wrote, we'll have them here at the next meeting, and you can post-
Get more information out of them, okay?
This was Norbert's response to an ENCB letter that had something in about their vernal pools on the site. E, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upward erosion, runoff, or by disturbing, disturbing bottom sediment. Their water quality treatment and runoff reduction and compliance with the DEC requirements will be provided. So I'm saying they're small to moderate there. F is the proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water. That's, the answer is no. Proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls by discharge of wastewater to surface water. Answer there is no. H is the proposed action may cause soil erosion, otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or degradation of the receiving water bodies. And just add in there, this is the Stormwater Pollution Plan. There's several practices that are being used. Most of them are infiltration, you're putting the stormwater, you're treating it and putting it back in the ground. There's bio retention, there's underground storage. The underground storage units are eight to 10 feet below the surface. It's a very complex method. It does meet the DEC standards for water quality treatment, runoff reduction. The quality of the water leaving the site is going to be better than it is now, since it's uncontrolled, and the rate of runoff is reduced. It's like 2% less than what's running off right now, so there's not a great deal of stormwater leaving pavement and heading offsite.
Can I just ask a question about that? Does it address the, does the Temporary Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan address the period when the fill is being imported to the site?
Yes.
So that there's no concern about siltation running off into the Millbrook watershed?
There's always concern during construction, and there's more controls required during construction.
This should be adequate to prevent any significant impact.
I mean, it's just, maybe there's not more soil erosion because they're covering all the soil with 30,000 tons of fill. It's just a funny question in this situation.
Loose soil there is the concern.
Yeah, okay.
No, I think the key, and that's why surface water, the key on this is, we have to be responsive to the Millbrook Preserve Action Plan of reviewing the watershed. And there were certain questions that were raised in that study, that if you're doing something in a watershed, you have to be responsive to it.
So, I looked at this. It had several recommendations for new development that was outside the preserve.
What, what is that?
This is the Millbrook Preserve.
That was like 2014?
Okay, yeah.
It was started in-
Is that online?
Yes.
Yes, it is. I think this was started back in 2008 or so.
Yeah.
Kind of a long-term plan.
But, but there are requirements in that, and we need to address those requirements in watershed. Or we need to address those requirements because we are in a watershed, so that's what we had. They pull up the report, look at what the requirements, but they said when you're doing anything in the watershed, you have to do these things, and that's-
The watershed extends over to North Ohioville Road, and extends down into the Cherry Hill area of the town. Quite extensive. Most of the plan deals with areas that are north of Henry DeBois Road, but they also talk about care being taken, and other major developments are going to occur, and make sure that stormwater is something that really needs to be carefully looked at.
So I will cite those recommendations and address each one of them in the watershed.
Also, just the removal of all the trees, wouldn't that make the stormwater enter the soil much faster than when trees were in place? So when you get, even though over time it would be the same runoff, it's now concentrating, it's coming down much faster than if you had trees.
The way the stormwater report is done is it takes the site the way it is right now, and it compares that with the site after all of the pavement and the impervious surfaces there. And that's your measure, you have to be able to not exceed what it is in the existing condition.
And it does mean things.
It does.
Okay.
It exceeds that. Okay, I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. That's pretty much the same thing. I've said no there, just because of knowing that the controls and the quality of the water that's going to be conveyed offsite, it's going to be better than what with no controls now.
Is that a requirement of the DC best practices, that the water quality treatment be provided on-site?
Has to be.
Right, so there should be no increase in, or decrease in water quality?
There won't be a decrease. It's, it's put into the ground, most of it's put into the ground. There's very little of it that is not infiltration, going back to groundwater, and it's treated before it's put in the ground. J is the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in and around any water body, and I think we want to recommend the Integrated Pest Management system here.
So famous passwords, IPM. It's in Elster County, okay, and they're using it, and we're just getting everybody else to adopt it.
K is the proposed action may require the construction of new-
Wait, so then would that be no? If, I mean, IPM doesn't mean everything's great. Not saying it's a large impact.
I would say with IPM, it's going to be small.
A small impact, okay.
You're gonna, yeah, if you had nothing.
Yeah, it's not nothing.
Right.
K is the proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. These are on-site subsurface disposal systems, so there's no new wastewater facilities. They had under other impacts there, the project design must comply with the latest DEC stormwater criteria. Be acceptable to the MS4, which New Pulse is now, and gain coverage under the Stormwater Speedage General Permit. Discharge will be enhanced wastewater quality and reduce volume compared to pre-development, pre-development conditions.
I think also in that will address the recommendations out of Millbrook Preserve that they recommend, and be able to answer those things.
Yep.
I think it would be good to probably address those in part three as well.
Yeah.
Right, I agree with that. Impact on groundwater is number four. Proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer. The answer is yes. Proposed action may require new water supply wells, create additional demand on supplies for existing water supply wells. There will be a new water supply well, one for CBS and another one for the Five Guys. I did kind of a little, it's a desktop, take a look and see how much water is generated over a site that size, and that's a kind of a test, if you're trying to pull more water out than, than what's possible. Looking at this as just a five-acre site, and the rainfall in Elster County's 40 inches, there's a common factor of about 30% goes to groundwater, the rest is runoff. You divide that by, and there's your cubic feet, you divide that by 365 days, and then you take that by 7.48 gallons per cubic foot. This site would generate about 4,500 gallons per day of water.
Is it possible to email us that permutation? I'd like to have that written out for me, if that's possible.
Sure. What is being, the design load for this site is about 1,900 gallons per day, and that's the design load that is probably, the usage is probably 60% of that design load, might be 1,200 gallons a day. So-
The site, the site, the site, yeah, he got all the numbers. The site receives about 4,500 gallons a day of water. That's based on rainfall, size of the site, how much stays on the site. And Dave will do the math and show you the calculations on it. So at 4,500 gallons a day, the site requirements between Five Guys and CBS is about 1,900 gallons a day. And he was getting into, the actual usage runs about 1,200 gallons a day. So even at 1,900, we're about half of the capability of the site for water recharge. But-
Well, they'll push the numbers through.
Doesn't that depend on soil type to a large degree?
Sure does.
And we don't have the fill yet, so when the fill changes?
The soil type on the site is C and D soils, which is really tight.
Yeah, that's what they inhabit, when they fill in.
It's going to be more permeable, I'm sure.
Yeah, so will it affect it positively or negatively?
You're going to be capping a lot of that now with pervious surface. So there's going to be-
So the infiltration to groundwater will be more or less?
Whether that balances or not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But at least it's being infiltrated, it's being put back in the ground. My guess is it might provide more than-
You mean 30% may be higher?
Yeah.
Because you're bringing in that material. All right, but we'll give you the calculations. I kind of thought it was cool. Sorry.
Supply demand for the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rate of the local supply. 1,900 gallons a day is really not much, so I put a no there for that. The proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer. It's a no, this is not a residential use. D, the proposed action may include or require treated, I put in treated wastewater discharge to groundwater. It will be treated, the design has been submitted to the Health Department for approval. So I put that as a small impact. The proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is, or is expected to be contaminated. The water supply wells must comply with the Department of Health standard, along with the treatment. Put that as a small impact. Proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or in aquifer. I put that as no, it's my understanding that this is going to be gas, natural gas. The proposed action may involve commercial application of pesticides within 100 feet of potable drinking water or irrigation sources, and we were talking about the IPM there. You said no on that. Number seven, impact on plants and animals. Been referred to Norbert Quinzer's environmental report. A, the proposed action may cause reduction in population, the loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species that's listed in the New York State or federal government that use the site, or are found on, over, or near the site. That is a no. The proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species, as listed by the New York State and federal government. Will be a reduction in the possible bat roosting habitat. The way the federal government usually handles that, and the DEC is they require any tree removal will happen between October and March, that's when bats are not there, they're under hybronoculose. So any tree removal would have to happen between that time. Put that down as a small impact. Proposed action may cause reduction in population, the loss of individuals, of any species of special concern or conservation need, as listed in the New York State or the federal government that use the site, or are found on, over, or near the site. Put that as a no, and you'll see in Norbert's latest letter that he kind of goes through that a little more, why he believes that's true. He found no records of occurrence from the data records on that, and he also, during his site inspection, he didn't see the habitat of any species of special concern. There were three species that came up. There was the Indiana bat, and the northern long-eared bat, and the bog turtle, and it's not bog turtle territory at all, possibility of bats roosting there during the summer months.
Talking about the species of special concern, do you mean the DC list of special-
The DEC's list.
Just about 10,000 species.
Quite a few. It's quite a few. Proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need, as listed by here. The answer is no. Proposed action may diminish the capacity of any registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to protect. The answer is no. Proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community. Answer is no. Proposed action may substantially interfere with the nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site.
Well, they'll be completely gone. That might interfere a little. It won't exist anymore. Like a large impact if I've ever heard of one.
Add, Jeremy, what the predominant species that occupy the site?
It's so funny with the bats, it's like, okay, so you'll take down the trees when the bats aren't there. But then, when there are no more trees, and we have no more bats, you know, it's, I mean, I don't expect this, you know, parcel to solve that problem, but it's just the way our laws are written is. What do you do? We just keep going until there's nothing left. What, didn't like 90% of bats die this year or something? Some bat die-off thing happened? I don't know.
White nose disease syndrome.
So we don't use many trees now? I'm sorry. Ask cruel, I apologize.
Well, it's because I think that's a large impact.
The concern with bats is the removal of the trees during their-
During their, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
Time when they're using them, because you take the bat, I mean, when the tree comes down.
Yeah, no, I get that, but I'm just saying like, that's not the only concern.
What about next year?
Yeah.
There's a lot more trees than there are.
Yeah, I mean, if there are more trees.
Well, you know, let's, that's an interesting question, but I'd rather ask Norbert that, how that interprets it, because I don't know who, how do you determine what qualifies and what's the predominant, how do you determine predominant species? What are you looking for in that? And-
I mean, yeah.
I just, just, because we're going to do this in Mohawk too, so let's get the, what that really means and gee.
I mean, it's just like what Tom said about Mohawk, you know, it's like, well, there's, what are the animals going to do who are there? It's like, they're going to be there, but then how much further do you keep doing that? You know, that's our, like, big picture on the planning board, is like, how many more trees can we cut down? How many more developments can we have until we reach a crisis point?
Well, the flip side of that is how do we maintain what we got, and how do we make sure we can maintain it continuously, so it is a, I would tell. Okay. Should I write that one up? I mean, that's something that- No, no, I, I think G is, you know, a question we can pose back to Norbert to see what it really means, what's, how do you determine the predominant species? Is it only the predominant species? Is it, you know, a couple of robins? It's, you know, I'm not sure how to read that question.
The question is, is this all taking into account the third path site? Or not at all?
Well, I think all of this does.
All of this, kind of, yeah.
Yeah. The whole site.
Yeah.
I mean, we're looking at the whole six acres, or whatever it is.
Okay. H, proposed action requires the conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or other regionally and locally important habitat.
You have 10 acres.
10 acres is a big number. I, proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only involve herbicides or pesticides. This is commercial, and we were talking about IPM being used.
Well, I don't know exactly what IPM contains. I mean, what kind of pesticides are those? Still chemical pesticides, right?
They use very biodegradable, and they kind of really look at how much they need to use. It's much more than just kill it all and-
It also doesn't preclude the use of commercial pesticides when we need it, right?
But if you, if you go back to when we did Park Point, and we got them on the Integrated Pest Management Plan, of them submitting their annual-
Yeah.
-plan to the town, that we can, you know, review or comment on. I thought that was, you know, the way I was looking at going with these integrated, it's not that they have a copy of it, it's the town has a copy of it, it's a requirement to submit it.
Yeah.
Obviously, these guys are going to use a landscaping outfit, a landscaping outfit's got to develop a plan for the year of what they're going to do, submit it, submit what they're going to use.
Do you have to do that every year?
Yeah.
To the town?
Yeah.
To the city?
Yeah.
I think, I think in Park Point's case, we were going to utilize a construction consultant for the construction phase, and then, but that, that is something which the board could consider adopting as a policy for projects over some time.
I mean, the county has requirement of an Integrated Pest Management Plan for all their facilities on an annual basis. What we're trying to do is, we don't have any law here, but from a policy point of view, that we get these applicants to submit this material to us.
This isn't going on right now, that anybody's reporting yearly to the town?
Not yet, we started with Park Point, that was the first one. And it just came, the county's law just came into effect, and we're reviewing.
So there's a new law now?
There's a, there's a county law which applies to county facilities. There's also a town policy which applies to town facilities to utilize this method of pest control. The question is, and I guess this would be germane to the fact that it's in the Millbrook watershed, is should the town be looking at that kind of activity more closely in certain cases, where there's a reason to require, or to request, or to expect?
So we'd just be looking at that because of the watershed, not-
Well, that would certainly increase the need to look at, I think, the nature of pesticide use on the property, and make sure it's as minimum as possible.
So we're going to have a new law out, so that they could report annually what they're using, but we don't have that law for anybody else, right?
It's not, it's not a law, I think in this case it would be a policy. The policy would be something that would involve from your review of the impact of this project on the Millbrook watershed. I believe, but I'm not certain, that pesticide use is probably something that would have the potential for an impact upon the-
What we're not going to do is anybody else.
Well, that's, that's, that's the immediate distinction.
You know.
That, that there is a sensitive environmental resource in this watershed, and this is in the watershed, which means things which flow through water could have an impact upon that resource. So you're not going to ask Mohawk Preserve to do it, unless there is a resource that they flow to. So that's the connection there. It's looking at it in the context of this.
But I'm just saying, we already have all these other developments in that area, we have Shopway, we have Snuff and Shop Plaza, we have Firehoppers, we have- Well, when they come to us, we can, you know. But, but they're not coming to us now because-
But, but they all hire- But they all hire landscaping firms to maintain the equipment. We have landscaping on a site plan. If a tree dies, uh, it's gotta be replaced.
They're gonna be giving us reports, all of them?
Well, I mean The goal is to see what the heck they're putting down on the ground. Uh, that's all it is. And obviously, this landscaping company is gonna
I'm not a favor of pesticides.
I know, but I'm just saying, the landscaping company's gonna submit to the, uh, property owner his contract for the year to maintain that facility. Well, what we're asking is how is he gonna do it? And he has to get us a copy of it. And we're not asking for additional work, but, uh, for, for a property owner, he should know what's going down on his ground. Um, and what they're using, and what safety requirements are associated with it, for his own safety and well-being, and his insurance. Um, what we're asking for is a copy of that plan, that annual plan, of what, how they're gonna maintain that, uh, and what they're gonna be using. It's not additional work, but it's, um, we do get questions when people start doing that. We looked at Park Point. They had a number of wetlands, uh, we were concerned about, uh, and, um, a lot of landscaping that was associated with it. And that's about that time that the integrated pest, uh, uh, management plan, um, was coming out of the county to do for their, their property. And what I'm just saying is that's something we should incorporate here, because it's, uh, it's a big issue, I think, coming up.
I found something in the Hill, or, in the Millbrook Preserve Plan that says minimization of the use of herbicides and pesticides or the use of integrated pest management.
I would go for that, but
Does that plan change from time to time, or is it sort of fixed here, it's sort of testing conference, the I P M?
The I P M changes.
It depends on your, on the nature of the experience that you're having with pests and what you're trying to accomplish. It, it's sort of like actively thinking about what you need to be putting on the property, not just hiring a contractor who comes in and says, I'll take care of it by dumping this stuff.
Okay. I'm gonna finish up seven. Um, those are the ones I wanted to accomplish today, because I knew we had a long run on that. Uh, at our next meeting, we will be tackling nine, which is aesthetic resources. Thirteen, which is our favorite transportation, traffic. Fourteen is energy. Fifteen is noise, odor and light.
Could you go put, write what was one before fifteen?
Uh, energy is fourteen. Fifteen, then seventeen and eighteen are, um, community consistency with community plants and consistency with community calendar. Like I said, I intend to have, um, our traffic consultant and hopefully Norbert down here, um, to, uh, address those, those issues. We'll go through that, review the material, if you got questions on it, um, comments on it, talk her it up, make sure we can get it out and, uh, address them. If there's something that you're not sure where it fits, write it down anyway, and we'll figure out where it fits. Um, a lot of times you get, you get caught up in these things and you find out, well, really, we can tackle that under a site plan issue. Um, not a secret issue, but unless we know about it, we can't, can't address it, so.
Mike, could I, could I just question? For that meeting next week, uh, what, um, we're gonna, this would be, do you want us to have Mr. Really here for our graphic consultant also?
I, it would be, uh, it's
Use here?
Yes, because the question, you know, if the question comes up and Ken's not sure of it, of what you've got in the report, um, that's why I kind of spaced it out, so we went that way on it. I thank the board, I got the one thing, uh, we heard a lot on the public comment, um, on the, uh, local law, uh, on, uh, the change in the, um,
Flood plane.
Flood plane. Does anybody have any? Yeah, otherwise I can't do Mohawk again.
Mike, just, for your proposal, the next meeting's gonna be November?
Ninth.
November ninth, that's
Um, the flood planes, well, yeah, I think well, one, we've only got a week to like really get our minds around it. Also, I think it'd be good to look at these comments that are mentioned from the D C, from first responders, the letter of the PDRA. Basically, I'd like a little bit more time to process it. That's where I'm at.
Cool.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to vote on it tonight, if possible. Um, even if we just vote on the first two parts and read on the part three, which is the subdivision. Um, these people are in bad shape. I listened to their testimonies at the town board. And all I can say is on behalf of this town, I am so sorry for people that you have to go through this. I do not believe that our town should be taking rights away from property owners. I believe that property owners on Springtime Road should have the same property rights as any property owner in the town of New Pauls. Um, I honestly, I almost cried when I watched the last meeting. I'd like to help rectify this law as soon as possible. And I would really like to vote on it tonight. I know the town is waiting for our comments, for hearing back from the county. They have a meeting again, I think in another week and a half, and they are ready to adapt the new law. I have all the faith in the world. Um, and Stacy, our, our building instructor, she's the one who directs these. Um, while the residents agree with it, they need what they need so they can preserve their homes. They shouldn't have to worry about it every single day of their life. It is terrible what's happened here. And, um, I feel really, really strongly about it, and I'd really like to vote on it right now, so that people can vote.
I agree that there needs to be done about it soon. I mean, yeah, it does seem like a ridiculous situation that we've gotten ourselves into, but I just wanna be real cautious and get all the information. I don't really feel informed right now to make an informed, uh, opinion on it exactly.
Well, there's three parts to the law. Um, the concern, um, one of the concerns is, is the subdivision. I had with the subdivision because
That would be my big, I, I really wanna know what they do about subdivision.
And you wanna think about subdivision.
But it's okay if we could vote on the first two.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to get comments out. The subdivision is, is the
That's, that's a big part.
That has a little bit more. Tom, anything yet? No?
Yeah, can you speak to any of that about emergency responders or?
Well, try send you subdivision two, because if you allow subdivisions, it's possible that you have no emergency access. And you sell a house to somebody, I know the people on that side of the river, they say, we all got conduits, we all know how to smell, don't worry about this. But, um, you could sell the house to somebody who has, doesn't have access. And let's say you sell it to a little old school teacher from New York City, and she buys a house, and there's a flood, and she has a heart attack, and nobody can get to it. Okay? Those scenarios would, um, I mean, very careful, I'd be very careful about subdivision of those properties.
That's what, that's what I said. It would be my recommendation that we vote on the first two changes, the first two amendments, the third one is about the subdivision.
Oh.
And I'm not trying to rush anybody into the subdivision discussion. I'm saying that we could vote for the other two, and we could table the subdivision for another date when we have more time, if you guys want more time to study it.
I, I apologize, yeah.
We skipped.
We skipped her. Um, lead agency status on O S I's, uh, River to Ridge, uh, proposal. Um, as usual, we heard nothing from anybody, uh, and, um, I make a motion, we declare New Pauls Planning Board Lead Agency on reviewing the O S I, uh, proposal.
I would second it.
All those are fair?
Um, so just to, up you, up to you, I'm even deep to make here, um, since the last time we met in September, we've gone out on the site, we've done the wetland delineation, uh, we met with Norbert, we're preparing the report. Uh, we should have something to by the end of this week, um, and for Norbert's review. Um, we've also gotten a letter back from National Heritage Program identifying, uh, two species of bird and one uh, species of, of flora. Uh, we'll provide you with additional documentation on this, this will have a path, and that will provide that with the wetland delineation report. Um, I think, uh, other than that, that would satisfy any of the outstanding issues that we needed to address with regard to um, David Ploser's comments. I know Phil Rody is reviewing this, I don't know if he's also
Yes.
He's gonna be reviewing it as well, so, um, what is our next step?
Well, again, you're sequential on, on reviewing that. We'll take a, take a look at you, probably not at the second meeting in November.
Okay.
And, and to see if we have everything, um, locked up, but I can't, can't move on that till I have a couple of questions on, A, development of the hillside line. We can't really move forward till we, um, subdivide, uh, on that, since that's principal part of your plan on that, so it's kind of contingent of one on the other.
Okay.
For that, but I'd be, um, I think we can take a look at, you know, just about everything else on it, because we need that information in conjunction with looking at, at the preserves' site too, so wetland delineation and, and Norbert's report is, is, um, will be key to, uh, working with, uh, the preserve review too. Okay?
And so your second meeting in November is which date?
Nine and fourteen of twenty-three. November twenty-third.
November twenty-third, okay. So we'll get you the information well before that meeting for your review, and if you need anything else, just let us know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize again. Um, okay, back to
Um, I guess, I just thought that maybe I should disclose that I own land on Dog Road. Maybe I shouldn't even talk about this. I'll leave it up to you, I don't know.
Well, I'm gonna also disclose that I am the Democratic, no. I represent the people in that area, but I'm not representing them here. I happen to be their Democratic representative on the New Pauls Democratic Committee, um, so I do have that relationship with them, but I'm not here for that or anything like that. I'm, I'm just, um, trying to get these amendments made because I want these people to feel secure in their homes again.
Okay. I don't have anything to do with Dog Road.
Neither do I. I own my land. Just some cool wetlands.
And this, this, and again, we're not the ones, uh, voting the legislative change in law, though.
But they're, but they're waiting for us.
I fully understand. I, gonna get, from my point, I was with Peter on this thing, uh, the subdivision, I wanna think a bit, a little bit more on, um, you know.
The subdivision is of concern to me because of the Mahoney precedent.
Yeah.
I think I talked about that last time. In looking at the town subdivision law, there is a requirement for a, a pre-application meeting. And the town hasn't really, uh, planning board has not really made that a requirement. But I think in the flood lane district, it might be something that you could look at making it a requirement in order to submit an application. And as part of that, you could have some form of action take place at that point with respect to access and the safety issues that generated this law in the first place. Because, it's right here, no. Uh, the, the Mahoney application involved a proposed subdivision on, what road was that?
Coffee.
Which would have been flooded to a death of four feet, and two lots would have access via that road, creating issues for, obviously, uh, first responders and anyone else needing to access or exit that property. If that information is available to an applicant who is seeking to do that, before they make an application, they can take that into account, and there can be some form of, uh, notice to that person. You'll have to demonstrate some means of providing safe and adequate access that, that is consistent with the town, uh, subdivision regulations and with the concerns and issues that emergency service providers may have. So that you could also circulate that notice to the E S Os, the fire department, police, and so on. Say, we've got an interest in subdivision on Coffee Road, uh, this is the condition that exists there during the flood. Do you have issues or concerns about whether that application, whether a subdivision should be approved on there? And all that information comes at the beginning.
Plus, we have zoning laws in police, so if somebody doesn't have enough frontage, then, and you're not going to be able to, um, put in a development.
Right. But, but in the case of Mahoney, that, that lot met the subdivision requirements. Uh, the problem was four feet of water and the impact on
Yeah.
emergency service providers. So, the point, the point of that is to, to say to the people who might want to subdivide, you have to show us you can do so safely without impact upon your future owners.
They have to come to our planning board for that?
They would have to provide information, they, they would be put on notice.
Show that.
Yeah. They, they basically would be told at the beginning of the process, you need to demonstrate these things.
And you would, you would tell them Before you even do the first layout or see the surveyor, uh, you gotta be able to answer these questions and show us.
I think that's really unfair. Um, I'm really just looking to try to vote on the first two parts tonight, is what I'm recommending to the board.
Could you, could you give me a quick rundown? I've read it, but I don't recall off the top of my head, what the first two parts are.
First one is just flood damage, um, and, and the big thing on that, and if I'm wrong, just correct me. Um, we had a substantial improvements, um, terminology, um, and what they did was they dropped part of it because, uh, well, Dave's better at it back then, but it's hard to enforce this.
Well, I mean, if somebody
Unenforceable.
If somebody wants to put a family room on to the back of their house. I mean, that's the right of most property owners, if they, you know, within reason, if it fits into their, the zoning and a certain percentage of their property, and they have the property, they really should be able to put a family room on the back of their house. I mean, they have to obviously go, um, to the board and get approval, you know, go to Stacy and get approval.
And they have to build it to the
They have to go to Stacy and get
Have to go to, and they have to build it to the
Okay.
code, um
Of course, but any property
Back then, I'm just, I'm just, this is just, uh, we're just trying to do the, um, the flood, the flood, um, chapter eighty-two.
But I'm just looking for those property owners to have the same rights as any other property owner.
But they live in a flood plain, and every bit of new development is making it worse. We have to take that into account. I'm not saying we wanna take away anyone's rights or, you know, hurt anyone's ability to fix their house when, you know, that would think that's terrible, but we don't think about these things.
The new development thing, the new development thing is a separate
I gotcha, but I'm not talking about new development, I'm talking about, well, okay.
It was, it was difficult, it was difficult, uh, to measure the cumulative substantial improvement. Uh, the terminology was difficult on it.
And it's like, it's just helping with that.
That, that would eliminate that, and they could, uh, build that family room on it, but they would have to meet the code requirements of eighty-two and
That area.
one forty, uh, that dealt with the flood plain.
FEMA standards, the, the FEMA standard, right?
Yeah. So that's all, that's all eighty-two set, right, basically?
It also had the access. As far as a foot and a half, the driveway could not be any more than a foot and a half below the hundred-year flood for residential, and no more than a half a foot for commercial properties. So that's being taken away.
But the code
You don't have commercial property there.
I know.
Yeah.
But there's other flood plains on the other side of the river, so.
Uh, but the
Two, for example, it's got some
But
flood plains right down here.
Would the code, building on the code take, make those one and a half foot, half foot meaningless anyway, if they had to build a code?
Uh, no, the building code is just for the building, it's the access is the, the way you get to that property is the access piece. The building code allows it, you know, you can come in by helicopter if you want to your home.
What, what was the effect in the flood, the flood protection law of that restrict, it was a prohibition against constructing? There was a prohibition against constructing?
To be able to qualify to build a new house, you had to meet that standard, yeah.
Okay.
As far as the access standard.
So this would now allow houses to be built on lots that that provision prevented?
Where they don't read the access.
But they would be built above the base flood elevation, they'd be built according to FEMA standards, so you'd be safe if you were in your house.
But if you need emergency access, you wouldn't be able to.
It's, depends on where the property is and how you.
You may not.
But if they built it runway.
To have emergency access in the driveway, if you can't get to the driveway to begin with, that's, that's sort of.
Well, yeah, well, that's.
Especially over that particular area.
That's what George was getting to, was the, if you're looking to develop something new on there, you have to show your access during those conditions. Obviously, if you're on the east side of Springtown Road, between Springtown Road and a creek, there really, there isn't any access to show, but if you're on the west side, depending on where the lot is, you may have a way to get out back, that type of thing. That's, that's all.
There's a real trail back up there.
Yeah, I think, I'm just trying to get on the impact of the foot and a half and half foot on, on a floodplain, and whether that's.
So, let me see if I understand this. There's three possibilities. One is you have a house, and now you can build it or improve it, as long as you comply with FEMA standards. Two is you have a lot which exists, so you can build a house on that, as long as you meet FEMA standards. And three is, you have a piece of property you want to subdivide, and that will have to go through the subdivision process before you can build upon it, which you now can make application for a subdivision without that prohibition applying, but that's what I was talking about, that third case where you're increasing the amount of development that's taking place. If you have an existing lot, I don't know how many existing lots there are, which do not have structures on them, which could be built upon if this law is changed, but my presumption is that's a relatively small number.
I think I heard like seven or eight or two.
Right.
A handful, I know that, but I missed.
It may have some impact, but to take the floodplain restriction out, but that's the extent of it. You still have a subdivision process that people have to go through, if there is a threat, you have the Mahoney precedent to rely upon, if they can't demonstrate that, you could conceivably deny them. My point was saying you should do that at the outset, is to make sure they're aware of the challenge they face, if they wanna go forward with the subdivision, and they don't spend a whole bunch of money.
Sure.
Because then they have to sue you, and then we have to defend, and it's just a big waste of people's money, although I get a small fee for it. But it's not something I would encourage.
Yeah. But I'm just trying, I'm just trying to tackle section eighty-two.
Which is, which is what I think, you have those three things which could result. You have the ability to expand, which would now not be prohibited, you still have to go through the zoning stuff, but it would, taking prohibition out of eighty-two lets expansions take place, lets a new structure be constructed if you otherwise meet the requirements, and it doesn't prevent a subdivision application, but it, that's dealt with by the subdivision process as well. So if that's an acceptable outcome, you could vote to approve that particular amendment of that section.
Yeah, I'm thinking that section eighty-two, and to take out the cumulative substantial improvement language on it, the only issue that I was fighting with, with myself, is the, we took out the foot and a half and half foot, and I'm trying to visualize what the impact of that is. When you talked about building to code, that's the building itself, and what does taking the foot and a half and half foot out really mean, from a development point of view? Well, why was it in, from a development point of view, I guess?
Yeah.
But the purpose of those two numbers?
It was emergency response. For residential, it was the foot and a half, figuring that's about as much as you could go through safely, and for the half foot, it was like, if you have a business there, you need to get your employees out, not, not wait.
And the reason for taking it out?
The reason is, the reason I know of, is the people are very happy over there with, you know, they're very used to dealing with the flooding situation.
But yeah, I mean, it goes back to Peter, I mean, you get someone who, unsuspecting person who buys a house on Springtown Road and doesn't have a generator or a helicopter to fly out their sick father when they're having heartsache, and, you know, I mean, yay for the people over there, and I'm glad they're so self-sufficient, but it doesn't seem like good planning to me.
I, I, well, I think, I know what Peter's going back to, because when we had Mahoney application on the table, we did have people, we had tons of pictures of Springtown Road, but we had a number of people that came in, who did buy the house in good times, and didn't realize that that was what was going on there.
No, we see it happening all the time, there was an application before, it's where someone bought a piece of property, and maybe they researched it well enough, and it, you know, it's like.
I, I.
It's always there.
Yeah, it's always there. I'm, I'm okay generally with eighty-two amendments on it, to clean up some of the language in there, I'm kind of wishy-washy on a one and a half foot and half foot removals. And, but I would go for eighty-two with, with, with eight, with that, with something, but if somebody else taken a harder look at that one and a half and half foot removal.
Yeah, we get, can we, I think, someone mentioned getting input from the DEC, are they writing something up, or something's happening?
DEC actually reviewed this latest amendment, and really helped Stacy out with some of the wording in that.
Okay, so, okay, but what about from, like, the emergency responders? If the, you know, if that's what it's all about, and you could hear them directly and see what they think?
One of the concerns about the emergency responders is it's hard to stop them, once they're going in to save somebody, I think Tom knows about that.
What do you mean?
Well, they, they're, they're gonna do it one, one way or the other, they're gonna get there.
Then are we obligated to try to not put their lives in danger?
Well, that's.
Well, they, I, I can tell you when the, I think it was the police appeared at the Mahoney area.
Yeah.
It was sort of like, you wanted to just say, "Wait, don't say yes so fast."
Well, yeah, can you speak, I don't know much about this whole world.
When it's flooded, it's flooded over there.
Yeah.
And fire department has a boat, which the police department has entitled to, a police ambulance, and fire usually stations a group over on the other side of the river. I mean, it's something that's never gonna be corrected, but it's, you know, it's like any other situation, you're gonna have a, a, a problem getting in, and whether we had the Sandy and Irene, no matter where you go.
Oh, yeah, that, that, yeah.
And we have other safety issues right at the bridge, at, at the bottom of Water Street, where people are thinking they could go out and take a look, and those people don't have supplies. And I've heard that there have been rescues over on that side, just for people that were curious.
They always, they always have that.
Most of your rescues on that, that has occurred over there is people going around signs and driving a little water.
Yeah.
And, you know, I see Rescue Squad, they've got somebody on Springtown Road, use a rail trail, and we're gonna get a cardiac patient out.
Yep.
And, so, there's, there's ways.
One thing the town could do, which would, I think they may have done it, to somebody's done already, suppose signage along Springtown Road that says it floods, you know, the flooding level is generally here somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody's buying up to look at a house on Springtown Road, you drive past a sign, and you see the flood level is at the level of your eye when you're driving, you should be able to make that connection.
I, I hadn't enjoyed it, well, this goes back a long time. I was over in Germany, and along the Rhine River, going through one of the towns on it, and one of the buildings that was back away from the water had markings on the side of the building, and years next to it when the Rhine flooded up and how high it got on that, so one could think of it there. I just, I just want, see if I can grab up, I'd like to.
Just let me ask town board a question. Do you always station a fire truck on the other side of the river before it floods? When you know there's a.
It's been, it's been general practice over the years, you guys say.
Yeah.
Generally, you have some foreshadowing that there's gonna be flooding. It's not like it turns up over an hour or two.
I'd like to send, at least from my perspective, for local law, section eighty-two, I'm okay with it, but I, one question is, I'd ask the town board to revisit and justify why they got the one and a half foot and half foot sections for the access to it, and why it was, why it was removed. But I think that's where I'm at on eighty-two.
I think we should promise it for next meeting, definitely.
Well, I'd like to, like to do that, because, folks, I'm not gonna be here at the next meeting.
I think it might be too late, honestly, because.
They haven't gone to county.
They, they have outed the county now, is what they said.
Yeah, it's on the agenda for county, for their first meeting in November, which is the first one saying November.
Right.
Yeah.
So they won't talk about it at their next meeting, and we're not gonna have another meeting before that, are we?
You are, actually, if, if they stick to their stated schedule, because they meet the third and fourth Thursdays.
Mm-hmm.
And this, you meet the second Tuesday, Monday.
Yeah, the county, the county's gonna be November for us, if it's on the agenda for the county. Okay?
Anyway.
But we'd have to have it pretty well written up, hanging out the door.
That's why I was thinking we could just maybe, you know, work through the first one and, and the second one tonight.
Well, the other one is, yeah, let's talk about the zoning. I, I agree with Peter, I would either table the subdivision, because I just, you know, if it means better access for us, I would like to take another look at that.
I just wanna say that I completely feel for the homeowner of Springtown Road, and I think that they're in a bad situation, but it's not the same as every other road in town. It's a different, it's a different situation, I think, seems to me the equivalent of like spot zoning, where like, people wanna put a family room on, but we still have to look at the overall picture, and we have, you know, that's what we're obligated to do.
Well, the, and again, from the, putting it on the family room line, is, is not, they have to build it to the code requirements for the floodplain.
Yeah.
So, so, it's gotta be, how high up it's gotta be, and so, it's different there, but they still have to build to that code. You can, all they're saying is, you can put it on, but, you know, you gotta build to this code.
Yeah, exactly. They already have a schedule.
And, but I, from the subdivision and zoning, I just wanna make sure we're not creating more lots and more development on that side where we shouldn't be.
Yeah.
But I wanna maintain, I'm kinda with Amy on that, I want the people that are there, I want them to be able to stay there, and have some value in it, I don't want them to abandon their house because they can't do any more than twenty-five percent.
What if the, okay, I'd like to make a motion to vote on the first and the second section, and put section three, that we still wanna talk about, the subdivision, put that on hold till later weekend.
I would, what I'm talking about is section eighty-two and section one forty of the zoning. I would put in that I would also, in that note to the town board, that they reexamine the one and a half foot, half foot limitations that were removed, and, and justify the removal of them, because we're looking at emergency responders' capability on it. As far as the zoning itself, I don't think I had too many issues with that.
It almost mirrored the eighty-two, with the cumulative substantial improvement language and whatever. There's a problem with, if you got flooded two times, or were more than twenty percent, fifty percent of the value, I think it was, was affected in over a ten-year period, then you couldn't do anymore.
Yeah.
And that was just like, how do you go back ten years and know what the value of the house was and compare it, it was just, Stacy couldn't.
Some of the things are just unenforceable, because you can't, more interpretation than.
And the other was not being able to add an addition, I think that was more than the twenty percent of the floor area of the house.
So I'd like to make a motion to vote.
Well, we got, we, you already made it.
I did, so, so, does somebody wanna second it, then?
Why, I, I'll second it, but I'll put in the caveat on the one and a half foot and half foot.
Yeah.
Next time.
Well, I wanna send, I wanna send these to, to, to the town, and then at our next meeting to reexamine one twenty-one, the subdivision, because that's really our bailiwick, and we wanna really have a good tight control of any lands being subdivided in there, and knowing that if they're going to, if, you know, if we got the person from New Jersey who bought a lot and comes up there with, you know, we wanna be able to tell them, "Hey, don't try to, see if you got the access first." Right. I think that's where we really wanna look at that. I'm not really in favor of major developments along Springtown Road because of the issues associated with safety.
I don't think anybody's looking for major developments.
And, or any, you know, and I wanna, but I'm, I'm a, I'm a, the people that, the law we've created is a, has a tendency to be a death spiral right now, of people unable to maintain their homes, and then become abandoned, and it just keeps going down that way, so, maybe that's a long-winded thing, but that's, that's for eighty-two and one forty, with that caveat. And we'll send a letter off to the town board, and we'll come back to one twenty-one, to, to make sure that we're comfortable with it as far as the subdivision.
Can you just clarify, removing the one and a half and half foot thing, your, your concern is ESO safety? Is that the issue that you want the board to take into account?
You know, we, we got, like Dave said, we got the house built to code, it's up ten feet, we have the road that we know about, but this, this access, we really don't have a good feel on where it could be or not to be, and, you know, there are issues of building something in, in there, so I, I just, I'm not comfortable when I read it justified removing it. I didn't find enough information that said you should remove it. So I'm just asking them to reexamine that.
Yeah.
Okay. Just figuring, give them as many clues as possible.
Once they reset, does that come back to us again, or we're done with that?
Probably not. Legislative body takes it. Okay, I have a motion to second, all those in favor? Have another motion to adjourn?
Um, you have.
All right? Oh, wait a minute, I got one more.
It's also amended, I mean, this is amended, Tom?
No, I, I got one more before I go, and I, I'm, I'm remiss in it, and I wish Lyle was here. As you know, oh, we got, yeah, those two. Yeah. Well, New Pulse Resolution.
Shoprite Resolution will take probably ten minutes.
Maybe we should also have a quorum check for the next meeting, 'cause I won't be here on the air.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Sorry.
They're gonna stop talking about us now.
Okay. Ms. Kelly and I were taking vacations the same week for a while, isn't it? Okay. Shoprite Resolution.
Yeah, I circulated, I prepared to circulate a resolution that's based on the.
Did that come today? Why do we talk about the weekend?
Because it just couldn't get done on Friday.
Did you send it, did we get, we got it, you sent it to us?
I, I sent it after reviewing it with Dave, Stacy, yes. So it's based on a resolution that you have approved for stop and shop, and it lays out the same process. So it, it basically says, "These are the plans we have before us, we got comments from the county on it, the applicant has addressed those comments, and the board has considered the comment, the mandatory comments that came in July, and found that they've satisfied those requirements with respect to the cross-access easement and stormwater and pedestrian access." And then you go on to, you did a secret determination in July, based on the prior version of the site plan, you're again making that determination with respect to the application as a. site plan, you're again making that determination with respect to the application as it's been modified, um, and I think in this case you can make a negative declaration based on the, uh, fact that this is largely existing and it's an improvement over the existing conditions on the site. And there are a variety of conditions which are attached, which are largely following, again, the Stop and Shop model. There's a requirement to maintain the landscaping, there's a requirement to provide suitable access to the property, um, there is the provision for, uh, cross-easements to the Sunoco property being offered, uh, all construction activities will be in accordance with erosion control, and stormwater management facilities on the site will be maintained, uh, the landscaping that's installed will be maintained, snow plowing will not, uh, affect the property, there's conditions that relate to the outdoor sales area being identified, so that they can be monitored, uh, there's going to be cart corrals and cart storage areas on the site that will be maintained so as to provide, uh, accessible, uh, means of walking through those areas, uh, there's some site plan lighting conditions that relate to any new lighting that may be provided, and basically make all the lighting better, and give the planning board an opportunity to look at the conditions after ninety days. There is, um, restrictions on signage to ensure that what they've got there will be maintained, there's a requirement for a bond amount, and an amount that, uh, the engineer has sent to Dave, I know, at seven o'clock, so I don't feel so bad about sending my stuff at five o'clock. Uh, but I assume that Dave will be able to say that the bond amount is adequate, because that was discussed during the last meeting. Um, the only, the only thing that really seemed to be of concern to the applicant that is, that was put in this resolution, and it's based on, again, on the Stop and Shop, uh, model that was approved, is, uh, restrictions on deliveries to the Stop, uh, ShopRite store. We had proposed hours, they were concerned about those hours, um, the-
Sometimes you just can't tell those guys who are making comments. I'll tell you. I woke up at eight A.M. today, my four pallets being delivered.
Okay.
Well, what, what I, there is, there is a problem-
You can't really control the delivery trucks.
Well, there is some, there is, what you can do, what you can do is ask, and you can try to get them to, they have no real interest in having delivery trucks come out of there when there's traffic congestion.
I gotta be honest, if we have laws in the village that prohibit deliveries before eight A.M.
Uh-huh.
And I live like a half a block from mobile, and I was saying like every third, and I complained like a million times, but every third night, there's beer trucks and water trucks and soda trucks and ice cream trucks, and they leave their engines idle, and my point is that we cannot control the trucks. They're gonna come, they come on these very long trips, they're coming up from Unica or wherever, and when they get here, they get here, they have to make their delivery, and they have to leave us and get down to Long Island, and we're going next.
I do occasionally work for developer side clients, and I know that it depends upon the particular, um, tenant, but there are things which they can do to, if not completely control, at least to make it more likely that they'll come during certain hours than other hours.
It says primarily, it looks like in here.
Hmm?
It says primarily.
Yeah. And really, the intent is for the tenant and to talk to ShopRite and say, it makes sense for you to schedule your deliveries so your trucks don't have to go out into the middle of congested Route two ninety-nine. And, and really, you know, you can, you do what you can do, and it, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all we're trying to do on that one.
So what I would suggest is you authorize the chairman to settle on the specific language there, because they did have some concern about it, but otherwise, it provides standards that the building inspector can enforce if it becomes especially noxious. Uh, and it limits outdoor storage of pallets, uh, requires that the parking areas be available, uh, the outdoor sales are limited, uh, carts have to be kept in the storage, uh, area or corrals, I know from my experience in shop, you know, good luck, but at least there's an expectation, at least there's a requirement someone can point to and say, you're really violating the standard. Maybe you don't do it every day, but once in a while you have the opportunity. Um, I think everything else in here is, is, wasn't objectionable to the tenant, it's fairly standard, um, so if you wish, you could authorize the chairman to sign the site plan upon, um, the resolution being finalized and, uh, all of the requirements for site plans that you're being applied with, which are basically posting the bond, putting in appropriate notes for all of the different conditions that are, uh, being imposed by the resolution, and, um, paying all fees due to the town.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to let, um, chairman, um, Mr. Chairman, um, handle this going forward with ShopRite, um, it'll be at his discretion and the building inspector's discretion. Okay?
With the input of the town agent.
Just one little question, it won't affect what was just proposed, but I'm curious, but was the, uh, their comment on the, county's comment on connectivity with the Gulf Station?
They wanted, uh, in the first go-around, they simply said, we encourage consideration of cross-easements with the Sunoco Station, uh, so that you can reduce future, in the event of a future redevelopment of that site, you can reduce the number of, so they did provide a, an offer of an easement at a point of connection, and it's, you know, it could be done, require Sunoco to go through the process and agree to it on their side. And that's similar to what you've done on other projects like Stop and Shop, which had a couple of points of connection.
Slide ninety-one, you have a title.
No. You found it! Here, I owe you a dollar.
At this time of night, too?
How do you sign English degrees?
That's right, I knew there was a reason why you took that, right? Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have one point for the board. Um, I'd like to respectfully ask that we could put, maybe not on our next meeting since people are coming in here, but on the meeting after, that we have a very quick discussion on the pledge, I'd like to be pledged.
Can I vote first?
I'm not asking to talk about it.
No, no, all those in favor? All right. Thank you. Okay. Now, yeah, okay.
For offering. Um, in Ridge, it's just abstracted to the resolution for the demolition permit, and the bond amount was approved by the town board, so I think if there's no question, let's see if the board can go forward. You don't actually have to vote on anything, so.
Right. All right, I had a, and I wish I would have the last quick one. Um, comprehensive plan, joint village, town, uh, group is starting up again, um, I got a-
I see you know it's a lot interesting, and you're telling your end.
You can end it now. Um-